...Dublin City Council back to order. Chris, could you please lead us in the play?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. We have a few special current proclamations here this evening. Could I ask Glenn Aide, is he here? Could you come forward? Glenn has been a resident of Dublin for 15 years and has been active in many community organizations and with the city since his first days here. He was appointed to the Bicycle Advisory Task Force by Dublin City Council in the fall of 2009. The task force launched many biking initiatives for the city, including the development of the Dublin Bicycle Ambassador's Volunteer Program. Glenn was one of the original ambassadors in 2012, helping to form the program, assisting with bike rides, group rides, policy information, and ongoing development. He has remained an active bicycle ambassador to this day. Glenn will be moving from Dublin to Cincinnati. What?
No.
Sit down, Glenn. All right. This coming summer, in gratitude for his service and his advocacy for safe biking in Dublin, I would like you to accept this proclamation. We will be recognizing May as Bike Month here in Dublin, and the proclamation reads as follows: Whereas bicycles are an excellent form of recreation and transportation for the enjoyment of Dublin's scenic beauty, local attractions, and friendly neighborhoods; and whereas these bicycling activities help to make the city attractive to businesses, residents, and visitors who enjoy the outdoors and healthy lifestyle; and whereas creating bicycle-friendly communities improves citizens' health, well-being, and quality of life, boosting community spirit, it involves traffic safety and reduces pollution and congestion; and whereas May has been declared by communities throughout the nation as National Bike Month for each of the last 62 years; and whereas the League of American Bicyclists, Bicycle Clubs, schools, parks, and recreation departments, police departments, hospitals, businesses, and civic groups throughout Ohio will be promoting bicycling as a leisure activity as well as an environmentally friendly alternative to the automobile during the month of May 2018; and whereas these groups are also promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operation and safety and education in an effort to reduce collisions, injuries, fatalities, and improve the health and safety for everyone on the road; and whereas the League of American Bicyclists encourages all citizens to ride their bicycles to work, to the store, to the park, and around their neighborhoods with friends and family to promote personal and societal benefits achieved from bicycling. Now therefore I, Gregory S. Peterson, Mayor of the City of Dublin, on behalf of all of Dublin City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2018 as Bike Month in Dublin, Ohio, and urge all residents to ride their bikes as often as they can throughout the month of May and beyond. So. Thank you very much. Could you just say a couple words?
What's taking you to Cincinnati and tell us about yourself a little bit?
Yeah, thank you very much. I hate to leave Dublin. Hate to leave Dublin. I accept this on behalf of all the bike ambassadors and all the bikers in Dublin. I moved here about 15 years ago, and it's one of the greatest communities I've ever lived in. I'm only leaving to move closer to my kids. As I get older, they might need me. So, I'm moving closer to them.
I love that.
Yes, thank you. So, I appreciate everything that everyone in Dublin has done for me. I recognize a lot of you, including the city manager and many of the council people. It's been a great community. I came here to start a bank, and I've loved it. I've ridden my bike almost every day since I've been here. So, it's a perfect place to live, and I thank you very much. I accept this on behalf of all the bikers.
Absolutely. We wish you very best.
It should be noted that he served over two and a half years designing all the bicycle trails with the Bicycle Task Force. It was a long assignment, and he did a great job. And we were going to have a big party when we finally finished the last segment of that bicycle trail, which is being held up in a lawsuit. And I was looking forward to having everybody come back after all these years and do that, so.
I'll come back to that and ride over the bridge across the river.
There you go. Deal.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for everything you've done.
For our community. Now, if I could get Jason and Tina Lou to come up, please. Jason?
For those of you that don't know, every year, Jason and his wife host our Grand Leprechaun luncheon. That's before the St. Patrick's Day Parade. And it is such a wonderful facility. We love having you here as one of our restaurants and our corporate citizens, and the hospitality that you show to all of our former Grand Leprechauns and to our community. You're right there in the heart of it with the parade and everything else. And the warmth and your staff is always fantastic. The food's fantastic, and you're always so welcoming and generous to our community. We wanted to take a minute and recognize you for that. So, I have a proclamation for you. It reads as follows: Whereas J. Lou Restaurant &amp; Bar has sponsored the City of Dublin signature events since Jason and Tina Lou first opened the doors in historic Dublin in 2004; and whereas every year since then, J. Lou Restaurant &amp; Bar has prepared and served 400 dinners at the Dublin Irish Festival Emerald Club to our members and guests; and whereas J. Lou Restaurant &amp; Bar has sponsored an annual luncheon honoring the Grand Leprechauns following the City of Dublin-St. Patrick's Day Parade, opening the main dining room and serving 60 invited guests, including the current and former Grand Leprechauns and members of City Council; and whereas J. Lou's sponsorship of the annual St. Patrick's Day Parade includes presenting a giant shamrock helium balloon, which was enjoyed by all the party viewers; and whereas as part of their restaurant sponsorships, Jason and Tina Lou have promoted the city's signature events on both their website and on social media; and whereas a conservative estimate of the cash value of J. Lou's Restaurant &amp; Bar's sponsorship for both the City of Dublin-St. Patrick's Day Parade and the Dublin Irish Festival events since 2004 would be $130,000, including venues, food, and labor; and whereas Jason and Tina Lou are wonderful examples of meaningful business partners to the City of Dublin. Now therefore I, Gregory S. Peterson, Mayor of the City of Dublin, Ohio, on behalf of all of Dublin City Council, do hereby declare Friday, May 11, 2018, as Jason and Tina Lou Day in the City of Dublin, Ohio.
I believe you can do whatever you want on the 11th of May. Thank you so much. You want to say a couple words?
Thank you. Thank you all. It's very honored to be here. And since 2004, we have been a great community member. We work very hard to be a valuable member of the Dublin community by serving you. And I want to special thank my wife and my staff, and working so hard to be a fixture of the historic Dublin district. So, we are very fortunate. Last 14 years has been life-changing for me and for my family, my company. It's been a very good success. I think Dublin is our starting point for success. So, we're very grateful for this great community. So, compared with all those people in Dublin, we noticed by participating in all those events, we saw so many people, like the volunteer for the community service, for helping. That's our inspiration for me, for my family, for our staff. So, we always have fun to be part of it. This is kind of from our genuine spirit. It's not like somebody forced us to do it in person. And especially work with Mary Jo and all other city staff, we have so much fun together. Make it like a long day become a fun day. So, we are looking forward to next 14 years by serving all of you in Dublin, in Washington. Thank you very much. We very appreciate it.
I'm just waiting for somebody to tell me what to do. I'm going to do that. Can you take a picture?
Take a picture.
Sure.
I'm going to send him my pants.
Where's his wife? Let's get his wife up here. Come on. No, no. What's that?
Thank you.
Thank you. They've got a good staff.
Yeah.
Their staff's great.
I think we do. We even have some former leprechauns. Well, once you're a leprechaun, aren't you kind of always a leprechaun? Okay. Chief, okay. The next item on our agenda is the Light Central Ohio Blue. Chief?
I have a proclamation. Do you want to describe what this is all about first before I read this?
Sergeant Rice has actually been coordinating this.
Okay.
And she is going to explain what this is all about.
Fantastic. Thanks, Sarge. Hi.
Hi. Thank you. Light Central Ohio Blue is a coordinated effort to honor those law enforcement officers that have been killed in the line of duty. It's also a way to show support for those officers currently serving and the families of both of those. It coincides with Police Week as well as our Police Memorial. So, we encourage all businesses, residents, citizens to turn their porch lights blue or put a blue light in their window from May 9 through May 16 to show your support for law enforcement officers. And I do have a small supply of blue light bulbs if you don't have one.
Did you say the 9th through the 16th?
9th through the 16th. And our Police Memorial is May 11 at 1:00 p.m. at the Dublin Justice Center.
Okay, so you have a supply of some blue. Those are going to go about as fast as an hour. Where else do you think people can go to get these?
They can get them at Lowe's and Batteries Plus, and our Alumni Association is also selling them.
Okay. And how do we get that from you guys, the alumni? I'm assuming you're talking about the citizens?
Yes, the Dublin Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association.
Tim, do you want to?
Tim, do you know how we can?
How they can get ahold of the Alumni Association?
If you go to their website, the DCPAA website, you can get information on that.
DCPAA. And then what? You mail them to them, Tim, or what do you do?
Just call me or send me an email. We'll make sure to sell you some light bulbs, okay?
Okay.
Go ahead and give out your personal cellphone number.
All right.
Actually, go through there. If you want, tell me how many light bulbs you need, and we'll get them to you, and we'll get your money.
Okay, great.
The money does go to support the police department and all the things that they do to make this such a special.
And how much is a bulb?
$5.
Five bucks.
That's a bargain. Money all goes right back into programs to support the PD and the city.
That's what I was going to ask you, so.
We're not making a profit.
We're giving it back to the police department or the people that have been victims.
Yep.
You know, in this community, it's amazing how, I guess not amazing, but how much they appreciate. Chief and I had breakfast, had a cup of coffee this morning with a portion of the community that just wants to give back to our police force. And that's really what the Citizens Police Academy is all about, is citizens getting involved and giving back to the police.
Every time we set the display to sell the bulbs, we get almost as many donations with people that don't take the bulbs. They just give us cash donations. So, I appreciate that from you folks as well.
It's fantastic.
We do appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thanks. I do have this proclamation, Sarge, before you leave. Whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation designating May 15 as National Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as Police Week. And whereas Police Week commemorates law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered a dedicated service to their communities; and whereas we also honor those law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the line of duty; and whereas the members of the City of Dublin Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Dublin; and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency and officers who protect life and property against violence and disorder; and whereas Light Central Ohio Blue is a coordinated effort to fallen police officers to show their support to those officers currently serving in their communities; and whereas by going blue, the Light Central Ohio Blue Campaign encourages businesses and residents to show their respect for those officers who have paid the ultimate price, their families, and the officers currently serving. Now therefore I, Gregory S. Peterson, Mayor of Dublin, on behalf of Dublin City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of May 9 to 16, 2018, as Light Dublin Blue Week in the City of Dublin, and call upon all businesses and citizens of Dublin to place a blue light bulb in their porch light, garage light, or in a window throughout this week, and to display their flags at half-staff on May 15, signed the 7th day of May 2018. Community Service Officers. Chief, there you are. Take it away.
Before I talk about the CSOs, I just want to point out, with Police Memorial Week, you know, we like to think that unfortunately, line-of-duty deaths happen other places, other cities, and those types of things. But, you know, if we unfortunately remember in the last few years, we've had three very, very close to our area. We've had Officer Sean Johnson in Hilliard. We had Officer Joring in Morelli in Westerville. And of course, Officer Steve Smith in Columbus. So, it just kind of brings that home that it can happen anywhere, anytime. So, thank you for the proclamation. Now, to talk about our CSOs. I think most everyone in this room has probably heard about our CSO program. If you haven't, I'm going to tell you a little bit about it. Tonight, we're going to recognize six of our residents, our City of Dublin residents, who were really groundbreakers in central Ohio by becoming our first community service officers. And by community service officers, I'm saying that they are volunteers, that volunteer their time purely, no pay, to help the police department to keep our central Ohio community, Dublin community, safe. They started in 2013. We had a vision that we wanted to find other ways to involve our community in keeping central Ohio safe and Dublin safe, and this was the direction we decided to go. They had to graduate from our Citizens Police Academy, which is a 13-week, once, one night a week academy. They had to apply. They had to go through a thorough background process. Some have complained that maybe it was too thorough, but we're very happy with the background process because of the wonderful people we've selected. They not only give their time and attention to daily police assistance and special events, they spend hours and hours each year training, retraining. And especially with this first group of CSOs, they've helped us to form policies and procedures for our CSO program. Of the original 10 CSOs that we started with in 2013, we actually have 13 active CSOs now. Five of those, or actually, six of those CSOs are still with us for five years and have completed nearly 5,000 hours of service to the City of Dublin. Our CSO program in the last five years, since they've been working for us, have completed over 5,200 house checks. They've completed 1,200 crime prevention notices for people who've left things in their cars, things like that, left garage doors open, more than 200 vehicle lockouts. And that adds up to a huge impact. And more than anything, it's created a new culture of volunteer service for our police department. In recognition of this five-year anniversary, I'd like to thank them and offer our gratitude. And the CSOs that have completed five years are, if you guys would come up as I call your name, Lisa Trippi, Joe Sandlerlin, Kevin Cooper, Abdul Sawah, who's not able to be here tonight also, Debbie Giddings, and Becky Saylor. In each of their names, we honor this recognition. The City of Dublin has made, and in honor of this recognition, the City of Dublin has actually made a donation to Get Behind the Badge, a central Ohio organization that offers financial and emotional support to families of first responders who lost their lives in the line of duty. It's actually an organization started by Angie McDowell, whose husband was a Whitehall officer and was killed back about 10 years ago. So, congratulations to all of you. I'd also like to honor and recognize the leadership of Corporal Kevin Kiefer, who's been the coordinator of this program since the beginning. He's handled all the coordination, training, scheduling, recognition for them in the past, and he's done everything really to make this a successful program. So, I'd like to recognize Kevin Kiefer, if you could come up. So, congratulations. I've got certificates for each of you.
Economic Development Week. Where's Colleen? Hi.
Hi. I think we're going to start off with a quick video.
Okay.
We're celebrating Economic Development Week here in the City of Dublin.
We love what we do for the businesses and residents of this great city.
So, what do we do exactly?
We attract new businesses.
And retain current Dublin businesses through innovation and partnerships.
We create conditions that make people want to live and work in Dublin.
We thrive so that you can.
Because when Dublin thrives?
Your streets get paved.
Parks are built.
And maintained.
The city stays safe.
We stay ahead of the curve.
And take things to the next level.
People want to do business here.
And work here.
And live here.
Because a stable income tax base.
Is vital for the kind of vitality we see here in Dublin.
From helping businesses expand to attracting new ones.
And helping companies with their workforce needs.
We are here to help.
To help you.
Thrive.
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 Thrive in Dublin. We didn't want you to have to read a bunch of "whereas." We thought that might be better.
Or having you guys do that sentence thing while you're standing here would be very challenging, too.
We walk and talk very well. I just wanted to throw out a couple fun facts about economic development during our week. This is only, I think, the second or third year that we've recognized our profession nationally. The economic activity generated from our 4,300 companies comprises more than 7% of our entire region's gross metropolitan product. And that total, it's $112 billion. So, we're 7% of that, and we're second only to Columbus. And that's in all 11 counties. So, this is a case where being number two is something to really be proud of. So, just wanted to throw that out there. Our corporate payrolls reached $4.4 billion last year here in Dublin. We have over 14 million square feet of commercial building stock. We could fit all of it smashed together, and we would take up half of downtown Columbus. So, I think when you look at the density of that, it's pretty impressive with the amount of facilities that we have here. For seven consecutive years, readers of CEO Magazine have voted for Dublin as the best suburb to do business. I like to believe that's because our team annually initiates over 500 business calls in our community and solves problems. Our goal every day is to sell Dublin. So, we would like to take a moment. Jeremiah Gracia and Rachel Ray, Kyle is parenting this evening with the baby. But we'd like to take a moment to say thank you for always being very supportive of our mission and our initiatives. So, thank you to council and to Dana McDaniel, our city manager. So, thank you for supporting us.
Absolutely. I say all the time, it is the, our corporate presence is the tip of the spear in Dublin. If that falters, everything else will feel the impact. So, greatly appreciate everything that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, citizen comments. There's a little sheet out there that people are supposed to sign up for if they want to make a comment. Nobody did. But is there anybody that didn't realize they were supposed to do that that wants to make a comment about anything that's not on the agenda this evening? Seeing no hands, we will move forward. I make a motion to approve the April 23 regular council meeting minutes. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ann?
Vice Mayor Amheros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
The next four ordinances are related to the Highland-Croy Road Riviera Connector. I move that we waive the rules of order to discuss these following ordinances, 32-18, 33-18, 34-18, and 35-18 together. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ann?
Vice Mayor Amheros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ann, if you could just read the names.
Sure. Ordinance 32-18, Darshan Shaw. Property is located at 8,700 Highland-Croy Road. Ordinance 33-18 is Noman I. Malik and Josephine Samina Malik, 8,640 Highland-Croy Road. 34-18 is Barbara Strobel and Laney Strobel, 8,622 Highland-Croy Road. And Kevin Mullins and Jocelyn Mullins, 8,600 Highland-Croy Road. And the last one?
I think that was.
I'm sorry. This is a separate one.
Dana?
No change from the original introduction and presentation.
Questions from council?
I have just one question. It's very brief. So, we talked about last time if we had addressed with the residents of the relocation of the driveway. Did the appraisals that we received on that, did it include the cost of relocating the drives of the individuals that would be along the new Caccio Lane, or was that just a land value?
It included reimbursement for their existing driveway, the value of that existing driveway, but the cost of the new driveway is just a project-related cost.
Okay.
And then one point of clarification I did want to make with you this evening is, when you asked previously about the driveways for the flag lots, two of the properties will get new driveways. The Malik property, several years ago, actually relocated their driveway to the north, so they no longer have a driveway. So, I fail to recall that when you asked that question.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Ann?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ordinance 36-18?
Authorizing the city manager to execute and accept necessary conveyance documents and contracts to acquire a 0.230 acre fee simple warranty deed for right-of-way without limitation of existing access rights from Harry D. Miller, aka Harry David Miller and Anna Louise Miller, located at 6260 Rings Road for the public purpose of constructing a new roadway which shall be open to the public without charge.
Dana?
Again, no change from the original presentation introduction.
Any questions from council? Hearing none. Ann?
Vice Mayor Amheros Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Introduction, first reading ordinances. Ordinance 38-18, Ann?
Authorizing the city manager to execute and accept necessary conveyance documents and contracts to acquire 0.007 acre fee simple warranty deed for right-of-way, 0.068 acre standard highway easement, 0.363 acre channel easement, and a 0.012 acre sewer easement from Gage Crossing to LLC located at 5314 Avery Road, approximately 1,500 feet south of Carey Road for the public purpose of constructing a new roadway.
I'll introduce it. Dana?
Similar to the ordinance you previously passed, this is in regards to the construction of the Tuttle Crossing Boulevard Extension and the Avery Road Improvements Project. Not yet slated for specific construction, still waiting to fill a funding gap, but nonetheless, we're budgeted to try to get acquisition of various easements and right-of-way in place this year and next year. The project does require the acquisition of property interest from multiple property owners in the area. As you have seen, the city has been participating in good faith discussions with Gartner Gage Crossing to LLC. They have agreed to donate the necessary right-of-way that is both mapped out in your staff report and specified in the ordinance. Staff recommends approval of this, allowing the city manager to execute
that field, what's the purpose of having that space there? What is, can you see where?
Out on the east end of that. Paul, you want to address that?
That's actually an easement that provides for stormwater drainage on the property. We have stormwater quality that we need to meet on the project, so that's what the purpose of that area is.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. We'll see you back on May 21 on that. Resolution 23-18.
Accepting the lowest investment for sanitary sewer extension for areas 11A and 11B in the Limerick Lane Stormwater Improvement Projects.
I'll introduce it. Paul?
Members of council, on April 30, we did open two bids for the reference project, that being the sanitary sewer extension project, 11A and 11B. That particular project happens to be the first project being constructed from the 15-year conceptual implementation plan that was included in the utility extension policy adopted several years ago. Additionally, the project also includes the Limerick Lane Stormwater Improvements, which includes 1,500 feet of storm sewer to be constructed along Limerick Lane. As you can see from the bids that we did receive, the bids are over the estimate. We spent a fair amount of time going through those bids. What we're able to identify is the increase in cost was related to maintenance of traffic, mobilization, and in particular, the eight-inch and six-inch sanitary sewer pipe, which is really the lion's share of the project itself. The pipe alone represents 110% increase over what was estimated by the engineers. Considering the two bids submitted are relatively close in staff's evaluation of the bids, we believe that the engineer's estimate did not accurately reflect the true cost to perform the sanitary sewer portion of this project. As a result, are recommending the award of this contract. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions. I did want to note that we have worked with the finance director, and we do have the means within the sewer fund of funding this project through the deferment of a few other capital projects and reprioritization of those projects.
Any questions from council?
So what projects would be deferred?
One would be sanitary sewer lining is one that we're looking at in particular. And really just deferring, it was programmed for 1.5 million this year. We would just begin that in 2020.
And I would add, as we always do, we'll look at the budget as we get towards the end of the year. If there's an opportunity to keep that maintenance up, I don't like to see maintenance projects deferred. And it could result in a deferral, but we would try to pick that up again next year. I think we're lining every other year.
We are.
So we'll take a look at that as we do the next year's CIP as well. But if we can find a way toward, as we go towards the end of the year, to make that up, you may see us back in front of you by the end of the year.
I have a question, Paul. You only had two bids. Is it because of the current construction impact on everywhere else that we're only getting a couple of bids?
That probably is part of it, probably not in this particular project. It's not the primary reason. We did talk to a few contractors after the bid, and their primary reason for not bidding was the rock excavation. There's a fair amount of rock, bedrock on this project, and they aren't just, they are not equipped for that sort of excavation. They don't own the equipment, they don't have the expertise, and they just don't bid projects that have rock.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions?
I have one additional question. Many years ago, when we were in a similar real estate boom that we are in, development boom that we are in now, was working on the Bank One Polaris, doing the mass drainage on there, and the size pipe that was specified was in particularly high demand. And so we looked at some things, and we're able to actually upsize the pipe and get the pipe at a better rate than the pipe that was in high demand. Do we have the ability to increase our capacity on any of these and seeing what the, you know, market might be on a different-sized pipe?
Well, first of all, they're really just two different pipe sizes. The first is six-inch, which are the house service connections. We probably really don't want to go much larger because we want to be able to maintain that minimum flow in that pipe as it goes over to the main. And the main itself is eight-inch diameter. I'm not sure that we're going to realize much cost savings there. The 12-inch, if we would go up a size, is made out of the same material. It's SDR 35. But we certainly can take a look at that and talk to our contractor. We don't have the need for additional size here because it serves a relatively small area. But we also want to look at the impacts on the hydraulics and make sure that we're not leaving, to give you some technical terms, the solids behind and let the liquid chase away and end up with a maintenance problem.
Just thought I would inquire sometimes if you shop for something that's even just a little bit size difference.
Understood.
But certainly, there would be engineering ramifications.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Ann?
Mr. Rosa?
I thought this was first reading. Sorry.
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amos Grooms?
Yes.
And Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Resolution 24-18?
Accepting the lowest investment for the 2018 parking lot maintenance.
Paul, you again.
Yes, council. On April 5, we did open four bids for the parking lot maintenance. The scope of the project involves seven different parking lots throughout the city. The scope is provided in the staff report. A local contractor, Chemcoat, located on Cosgrave Road, was our low bidder at $313,754.61, which was just about $5,000 less than our estimate. Staff recommends that we award this contract to Chemcoat. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from council? Hearing none. Ann?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Amos Grooms?
Yes.
Resolution 25-18?
Supporting the naming of the Transportation Research Center as a federal proving ground.
Thank you again, members of council. The U.S. Department of Transportation announced a pilot program.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
Sorry about that.
Go ahead.
The U.S. Department of Transportation announced a pilot program in November of 16 to designate 10 autonomous vehicle proving grounds across the United States. The Transportation Research Center in East Liberty, Ohio, which you are all familiar with, we've been talking about that a lot over the last year or so as part of our connected vehicle, autonomous vehicle, and the 33 corridor efforts. It was not named as one of those, so we want to reposition and refocus and try to get more momentum behind that designation. So we're backing up regrouping and running at it again. And as a part of that, we would like and are asking city council to pass a resolution in support of that effort and that naming. Union County Commissioners and City of Marysville have both passed, as well as the Logan County Commissioners have all passed resolutions in support of this.
Any questions from council?
So Dana, what does repositioning look like?
Well, you know, this is about trying to get on that list, and the U.S. DOT has named grant, has made available grant funding to the tune of $60 million for these kind of proving grounds. Don't really know what that means yet in terms of whether that would be accessible, but unless you're on that list, it's not accessible. So what we're trying to do is get ourselves positioned on that list if possible. So this is a 4,500-acre proving ground. It's very unusual in its size and scope and what it does. And there is a federal presence there, and we were all a little bit surprised that it wasn't named, so we're going to keep pushing to try to get it named.
Do you think the expansion of the smart corridor all the way to 75 and points beyond will help assist in this as well? The scale, I think, would be as large as most any out there.
Right. I think that's a contributing factor. What's a little bit surprising is you think about the investment that's going into the TRC itself. It's over, well over $100 million. Actually, just the wind tunnel that's being developed up there is like nearly a $100 million, if not over $100 million project. They're going to be putting in an autonomous vehicle, connected vehicle grid that will mirror a suburban, or I'm sorry, an urban grid there on site so that vehicles can be tested on site in these different traffic patterns. So there's significant investment going on there. It's just kind of amazing that even that didn't posture. So work to be done. You've got to tell your story. And I think sometimes, as we've all, I think most all of you have toured it or seen it or heard about it or received a briefing on it, as has our residents over time, it's just an amazing resource to have right here. But I would also say that probably haven't done the best job of telling the story about it because it's probably one of the best-kept secrets going, at least I think it was. But OSU, the Ohio State University, and others who are working there do an amazing job of investment in telling that story, and I think we just got to keep telling the story. So it's getting a lot of attention.
Any other questions from council? Ann?
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amos Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Resolution 26-18.
Adopting a statement of services for proposed annexation of 12.0 acres more or less from Washington Township, Franklin County.
I'll introduce it. Jen?
Good evening, council members. Don Plank, who was agent for the petitioners, there are four petitioners named in the annexation petition filed with the Franklin County Commissioners, a petition for annexation pursuant to the regular majority owner annexation method. The city of Dublin does own a strip of land that is included in this annexation petition, and the property is currently located in Washington Township. After council considers this statement of services, then the Franklin County Commissioners will hold a hearing and decide whether to approve or deny the annexation, and that hearing will be held on July 10. If the commissioners approve the annexation, then city council will be presented with an ordinance on whether or not to accept the annexation. The Statement of Services resolution includes the services that the city will provide to the property upon annexation, and those services include police, water sewers, stormwater services. Fire services will be provided by Washington Township. This property is located within Dublin's exclusive annexation area, as defined in the Water and Sewer Service Agreements with the city of Columbus, and is within our annexation area in the community plan. We would recommend approval of the resolution, and I believe we do have another property owner who's in the audience if you have any questions for us.
Questions from council?
I have just one question. Under the fire protection and emergency medical, the last sentence reads, Dublin will ensure that the property will be provided with fire protection and EMS services at the same or similar level now being provided to other areas of the city. Their fire EMS is, will be unchanged because they are currently provided by Washington Township, and then in the future, they will continue to have the identical service.
Correct.
Okay. Correct.
Any other questions? Ann?
Vice Mayor Groom?
Yes.
Ms. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
And Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to the other portion of our agenda, temporary signs for the Memorial Tournament.
Yes, thank you. The city manager's office has received a request for temporary signs related to the 2018 Memorial Tournament. As you probably know, Bridge Park will serve as an off-site destination for the Memorial Tournament throughout the week of the Memorial Tournament. ForFest, which is a street festival, you may recall, we hosted that at Bridge and High Street during the President's Cup. This is being done again, but on Longshore Street, which is off the main grid and within Bridge Park. They will have several events there, kind of mirroring what we did before, such as it'll be a small music festival, and there'll be the live entertainment, food and beverages. The goal of events to engage the Dublin community as well as the golf patrons and visitors. And Crawford Hoying has submitted applications for community event permits to temporarily close certain streets. As again, specifically, as I had mentioned, Longshore Street, Bridge Park Avenue. You have also, as council, approved the permit for the sale of alcohol during that event. So what's being requested are certain signs, which are included in your packet, to be placed on buildings and locations there. There are three of them total. Two within Bridge Park on Longshore, and then another one, which is proposed for the AC Marriott facing the roundabout on the south side of that building. Staff would recommend approval of these requested signs or temporary signs. They're intended to go up on a very short-term basis, to go up the week before, and then they would remain up during the event, during the tournament week, and then be removed the week following. So it'd be, I'm going to say, a total of three weeks because I can't guarantee how quick they go up or how quick they come down, but generally give them that three-week timeframe. We think that these kind of signs, you know, they're very temporary in nature, could be permitted through our event permitting process. I know that this is not a type of sign that we have typically done in the past, but I think from staff's perspective, we're encouraging it as kind of try one, see how it goes, and do this under the pretense of our event application process.
I think these are really pretty neat, and it adds to the festiveness of the occasion for the city. I guess, I mean, I'm totally for this, and I think it's a great idea. I've got one other question, and I know we were talking about it a number of months ago, and that's, and I don't know if we're working on that or Jennifer's working on that, but chain-link fences around our construction sites, like the library is a very good example. So you're not seeing portis sands and hard-hat workers and backhoes and stuff. Doing some kind of graphics on signs along those kind of fronts where we have chain-link construction sites and where you come up with a really nice graphic that the city would approve that shows either what the building's going to look like, or some message to the citizens of what's going on there, or some positive message about what's happening. I'd like to see some kind of change in the sign code where we allow temporary signage like that in those kind of circumstances. Other cities do it, and it's, I think it's very positive because it keeps from talking to the citizens in other cities while I'm over there. They seem to know what's going on, and they really like that kind of thing. So I think it's a missed opportunity that we leave all these chain-link construction signs, chain-link, or construction areas chain-link, and we have to look at a construction site. So is there anything we can do about that, Jennifer? Can we, is there any interest on my colleagues and council in doing this?
If council is interested in it, we can certainly look at code language.
I think I would be more interested in looking at this from an events package. I don't disagree with anything you said, John. I think it would be very difficult to measure these signs and codify their sizes. So I'm looking at the image of the one on the side of the hotel here, and it's like eight stories tall and, you know, 40, 50, 60 feet wide, which here is appropriate. If we change the code, then code would permit or not permit this in various locations throughout the city. So I think if we continue to tie it to the events process, then it would be tied to a location, and it wouldn't, I'm afraid if we just do a code change, we'll see, you know, they'll apply for that and get the event permit and can put up. This would be highly inappropriate, let's say, at the Irish Festival on Kaufman Road, right? Here, it feels very appropriate. So I would like to see us handle this through the events line rather than a change in code.
I think it's, well, for one, the tournament is a national event. Many times, these signs, they're called banner signs, they're used for different events. And the size of them and the location of them in many communities is determined by the size of the event. For us, this is our largest event. It's seen nationally. So to give this an opportunity to see how it plays out, I support that. Many communities ask that the signs are taken down 48 hours after the event. I think one week would prefer to see it 48 hours after the event, only because three weeks is a long time. I'm a little concerned about illumination at night. It never said, we never said in here whether or not this is illuminated at night. The reason, I don't think, I drove by this, and from the residence side on the river, I do not believe that you can see this sign because of the way it's curved. So I think you're only going to see an illuminated sign like this at night from Riverside Drive on the south. If that's the case, I wouldn't have a problem with an illuminated sign.
If that's the case, I wouldn't have a problem with an illuminated sign. If it's glaring, or if it's oriented towards the residences on the river, I would have a problem with it at that point. But I do think that it should be looked at as a temporary opportunity to see how this works. And if we use it for events, then I think that sizing like this should be gauged based on the size of the event. You have over fifty thousand people coming into your community, then an event sign like this would be appropriate. Less than that, maybe a smaller sign. So I think that we have a lot that we can study on this by using this opportunity.
If I may, just a couple of things. I would assume at this point that it's illuminated. I think we would reserve the right to check that if this went up, and for whatever, the illumination was too much, we would, I would write that into the permit that gives us the right to say, that's too much illumination facing the wrong way. So I hear that loud and clear, and I think that's perfectly appropriate to take forward. In regards to the timing, I appreciate the forty-eight hours. I'd love nothing more myself than for it to come down within twenty-four, if I could. The only, the only thing that worries me a little bit about the forty-eight hour is that size on that building. Can it really come down that fast? I would ask you to give me some leeway on that one, at least this first time around, but I hear you loud and clear about trying to keep that minimal, and I think that would be going forward as we learn more about these ourselves and understand how they work.
I was just primarily thinking of the residents. We had sort of made promises that we would try not, people are into the dark skies thing, and, you know, if we're starting to use a huge illumination like that, we leave it up longer than necessary, I think you might get some kickback.
I would agree. I would agree.
So we're going to address this request for these signs, and then we're going to have some sort of a policy discussion or a memo back from staff about how to deal with this going forward?
Going forward, yeah. We could try to, as staff in our event permitting process, maybe limit those to those global or national events, because, you know, having an event like this, or our, you know, maybe you want a big flag on July 4th somewhere, doesn't have to be there, or you want something during Irish Festival. You know, those are probably the most I would stretch that. I'd like to take up Councilmember Reiner's conversation separate, though, in his, what he raised on the other items, though, after this discussion.
Yeah, I think what makes these things work is because they're unexpected, and they're temporary. Because downtown Columbus, we could see what happens when you have the competing ones. They have smaller ones of these types of versions, as we know, and you find yourself in a very different environment. So I think being, not only the duration, but the quantity and the proximity of them to each other is important. So these are hard things to put in code, that's why the event package. Materials also, I can tell you from my marketing background, some of these can be brilliant, these canvases, and some of them are really not. So, I mean, the quality of that, I think, is when we, following the experience, the experiment that we do here, we should have some, we should have some specifications about those as well. I mean, these are not inexpensive. These are going to be, you know, high-priced, so not trying to increase that, but they'll, they'll work if they're high-quality and short-duration. They will just be noise if we don't.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the requested sign package for the memorial tournament. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Anne?
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Amros Grums?
Yes.
Mayor, might we address just the chain-link one for a second?
Yep.
Sure. I would be very interested in coming back with some proposal on that as well. Just from my own experience, you know, in talking to people about the, I'm just, I'll pick on the library project as an example. Had some guests from out of town walked over there, and they're like, what is that? And it got me thinking, of course, I'm there to explain, I'm walking them all around, you know, and I'm giving them every view there is to have, but, you know, if you think about people coming and visiting, they really don't know. And I'm surprised how many residents I've had actually asked me, what is that? And so I think the, you know, how much is enough and how you do it, but I think certainly on these kind of projects that are, that draw a lot of attention, are there for the benefit of the public, would be good to help tell the story, how much is enough and so forth. So I would welcome any direction you would be willing to give me on coming back with that. Or it was also on your retreat, I think it was one of your retreat items, it could be something that we could take up. The only thing I would not want to do is lose the opportunity, particularly with some of the, frankly, the cool projects you got going on, that are more of a public nature right now, and lose that opportunity. So, you know, certainly would welcome any direction you might want to give. And if that means taking it up later, so be it, so.
No, I'd like to see you come back with a proposal, because, like you say, we've got a really exciting bridge going up, that looks like a giant finger rising up out of a river. A lot of people who aren't familiar with what we're doing are asking us about that. One city won an award for, said it was the best city in America, and all my clients that I stopped at, of course, this was on a chain-link fence along with other graphics, had to tell me that they lived in the best city in America. I mean, the word was out, they were proud of their city. So this has a lot to do with, you know, your construction projects, which, what we're planning to do, has a lot to do with the speed of core of the citizens, they get to see what's going on, and without asking a lot of questions. So I'd love to see you come back with that.
So to your point, John, and the ones that I think that are done well are a combination of what it is and what the message is.
Yep.
So part of it is the Dublin message, and part of it is what's happening at that site. And that, if you do that, you can start to get some consistency, so it doesn't look like this potpourri of signage, but you have the Dublin message next to whatever it is. And then you can, at that time, create the consistency that gives you that quality. Otherwise, no, you get...
And to your earlier point, the more you do, the less it's noticed, and you want to be careful to not...
And that's where it's important, that the city, somebody in the city reviews the graphics of these things, and makes sure that, you know, the quality of the graphics is great, the message is great, and it's something we can all agree on. I don't know whether that comes back to City Council, or it takes too much time, or it goes to P&amp;Z, or whatever, there's a staff member that handles that, that's relatively sensitive, this kind of thing, with a background in design or architecture, you know. No, I just think it's something we ought to be doing.
I'd like to suggest maybe, especially in the Bridge Park area and also in the Historic District, you know, we haven't really talked about creating any kind of informational kiosks. And we have lots and lots of things going on, lots of events, lots of public events that the community can't keep track of sometimes on the website. Might be worth talking about whether or not we have a little structure that actually gives what's going on around town, especially in those areas that are so highly traveled. It's, it would maybe eliminate kind of too much, too much signage that you can't control up, especially when it comes to community events, like if there's a race or something. People can know about it ahead of time, you can advertise it during the time, and then move on to the next. It's just, it's just an opportunity, maybe, to get the community more involved.
Okay. I think we voted on that, didn't we? Okay. Is that it? Any other?
Yes, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Waivers requested by the Tantrum Theater. Michelle?
Good evening, members of council. We are excited that Ohio University's professional theater company, Tantrum Theater, is returning for a third summer season this year. They have two plays that are planned for the summer season, performances beginning June 6th and running through July 29th. Before council this evening, our two waiver requests, very similar to ones that we brought in the past two years. The first one is for serving of alcohol for opening receptions of both of these performances. Under our current code, the serving of beer and wine is limited only to the community hall, or talas, as we refer to them, and this would allow for the serving of beer and wine at the reception outside of the Abbey Theater in the lobby area. The second waiver is for extension of Dublin Community Recreation Center rental hours beyond midnight. Currently, our code only allows for hours to be extended up to midnight on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday for practices and performances. Tantrum from time to time will need those hours to be extended past midnight seven days a week. And we have with us this evening two representatives of Ohio University's Tantrum Theater that I think Rachel would like to speak about the program for this year. Rachel Cornish is with the College of Fine Arts, she's the Director of External Relations and the founding producing director of Tantrum Theater. And with her is Emma Parent, who's the assistant producer of Tantrum Theater.
Thanks, Michelle. Thank you, council members. It's hard to believe that it's been a whole year. It's waiver time now. Once again, we're at the eve of our first rehearsal for this season. Again, we expect close, although not quite a hundred, members of the company in Dublin at some point this summer. The two shows that we're doing, the first show is called The Cake, and if any of you have watched NBC's This Is Us, it was written by one of the writers on that show, so that's very exciting. The next show that we're doing, the second show that we're doing, is called Next to Normal. I think it's a great show for this area. It's a, it's quite a contemporary rock musical about a suburban family dealing with grief in the household, and based upon our pretty monumental success last year with our musical that last summer, we're pretty excited about this summer as well. Happy to answer any questions that you have about the waivers this year.
Any questions from council?
Now, I just want to make a comment that your productions are Off-Broadway quality. I mean, it was amazing what was done in that theater. I mean, you really elevated the art for our region, and I just hope that the rest of the residents in our area realize that this is a great chance for a great night out, seeing some really great art produced, and you guys go all the way. I mean, you don't hold back.
Yeah, we're very, we're very pleased to be here. I'm happy to report that, as of today, we're about double the ticket sales that we were this time last year, so we're pretty excited, I hope, as well, that we fill the seats this summer.
Do you have the dates yet of those two performances?
Yeah, the two opening nights, the first one is Friday, June 8th, and the second one is Friday, July 13th.
I have a question for you.
Sure thing.
I'm just thinking, now, when you want to use the rentals for seven days a week, would you, are there certain hours that you usually have your rehearsals?
Yes. Well, when we're in the Abbey, generally, it's rather intensive rehearsal periods, so that's the time, we call them technical rehearsals or ten-out-of-twelves, which mean pretty much that. A lot of times, we're in the Abbey pretty early in the morning, generally right when it opens. Theater people are generally not morning people, so we're there from the time of opening, doing notes and things like that, and then everybody descends upon the space, and it's the time when the lights are being put in, the set is being put in, and everybody is kind of coordinating the show, so it comes together as a cohesive unit. So it does tend to be from about the time the Abbey is open, or the rec center's open till about midnight on a number of those days leading up to opening night, and then once opening night happens, where they're usually an hour or two before the show to maybe forty-five minutes after the show. So it's, the intensive rental period tends to be for about a week before each opening.
Okay. And then after your second show of the season, of the summer season, do you anticipate that you would need the rec center during the month of August?
No. In the past, we've done a third show during the month of August, and we found that once the Irish Festival kicks in, it's best left to the Irish Festival there. So we're done at the end of July this year. We're still trying to figure out if there's a way to somehow let the Irish Festival happen and then do another show afterwards, but not this season.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions from council?
As in years past, you guys have done a great job of separating yourselves from the balance of the population, both visibly and physically, and you intend to keep that up again this year?
We do, absolutely. My only question is, is if the shows, so the receptions don't begin until after the shows are over, I would ask the council that if the rec center is closed by the time the receptions begin, and I won't know for sure until after those technical rehearsals, do we get an exact reading on the show, then we would not necessarily put up that barrier because the rec center's closed.
I think the intent of the barrier was to separate the, you know, the alcohol serving from, you know, our teens coming in and out of the building.
Absolutely.
And if they weren't present, I don't see why you would need to do that.
The rec center does close at 9:30 each evening, so this would be after. There may be other activities going on, or other rentals within the recreation center, so we would have some sort of barrier to make sure that this is locked off.
Any other questions?
Just one more. I'm just curious, Matt, is there much demand for the Abbey Theater from our summer camps or anything like that? During the, during the summer, they have other options. And I also want to say, I think it's wonderful that you're here, just want to make sure that we don't have a lot of unhappy children, too.
No, I understand.
To answer your question about the rentals and the camps and things that may be impacted by this, when Tantrum came to us last year, we worked diligently to relocate those camps. We moved some with the schools, we have great partnership with the schools and other venues, so those camps got moved.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Rachel.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we approve the two waivers requested regarding the Tantrum Theater.
One second.
Anne?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DeRosa?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Amros Grums?
Yes.
Riverside Park East Plaza site plan.
Yes.
We have a, it's our privilege, I guess, to bring forward to you tonight the East Plaza for the Riverside Crossing Park, and we're going to have a collaborative presentation between myself and Matt Erman, as well as our consultants with MKSK, to share with you the details and the programming for the park. I'm going to give a brief introduction to the background piece of this, and then sort of turn it over to the rest of our team to share all these details, and we'll have a video to show you what this is going to look like, and then, following all that and council's discussion and questions, then it's our recommendation that council approve this proposal, and we have two separate motions, and I'll go through those details as we get to the end So just in terms of background for this particular project, as you may recall, this is the master plan that City Council approved back in May of 2016, which was based on and created as part of the River Framework Plan that council authorized back in 2013, which included a significant number of public input sessions, and including of the public and talking through all the details of how they would want to see the river developed. So the master plan came out of all those public input sessions and time together to understand what was going to happen, or what people would like to see happen in the park. So then the master plan was approved by council, as I said, in May of 2016, and that just showed the possibilities of what could happen along both the east and the west side of the river, and all the opportunities that we have to engage both sides of the river, and incorporate that as part of the overall development within this area of the city. So as following through from a formal development standpoint, we had a basic plan for the Phase One improvements, and that included both the east and west side of the river. The portions that are highlighted here show then the general details of that, and as you'll see tonight, the proposal is very much in line with the basic plan that was approved by council in December of 2016. We did have, on the west side, so on the upper portion of your screen, that's the West Plaza, that was approved last August. So before you tonight, then, is for all the portions in the lower part of the screen, highlighting here a little bit better, to show then all the different pieces and details for this East Plaza, the Phase One of that. So with that, I'm going to turn over to Darren and his group to talk through all the details of that.
Thank you. It's good to be here this evening. My name is Darren Meyer with MKSK. We're the project lead from the consultant side, and with me is my colleague, Chris Kimbrell, and Dan Haynes from the Columbus Architectural Studio, who's focusing on the architectural components of the project. Before you tonight, the east side of the park, this is a very exciting portion of the overall park master plan. The park master plan, as a whole, is a very passive park. It's a natural resource-based park based around the river, but there are areas within the park where we anticipate that these are going to be higher traffic, higher use with the way that they engage the community, and this is one of those. So when you look at the future pedestrian bridge, and where that traffic would land on the east side of the river, when you think about the energy that's starting to develop at Bridge Park, and how that would spill across Riverside Drive into this, and then you also look at the major points of access into the park, at John Shields Parkway and at Bridge Park Avenue, a lot of those come together at this location. So this is one portion within a largely passive park that does have some more amenities, more hardscapes, more opportunity for the public to engage and gather. Bear with me just for a second here. Okay, here we go. Are you going to take care of those? Okay, thank you. All right, so we have, we have the same orientation, so the river is up to the west, Riverside Drive is at the bottom of the image, and we've split this portion of the final site plan into two views, so that we can enlarge a little bit and talk about some details. So what you see here, there's two largely hardscaped areas where the bridge lands and as it transitions into the park. And what we're calling the Upper Plaza, where the pavilion is, this is where the pedestrian bridge traffic flows across, this is where you have traffic crossing at the existing signal and crosswalks on Bridge Park Avenue over Riverside Drive, and that is at street grade. And then as you transition to the north, to the right-hand side, you have a Lower Plaza, which starts to make that transition from street grade down into the park and towards the grades that you have as you approach the river. So what we're going to do this evening is go through and address some of the primary materials, some of the primary features and amenities in the park. So you can see in this view, again, because this is where we have a lot of activity focused in the park, we have a concentration of hardscape materials, and we've tried to take that great level of quality that you see now in the built environment, both in the public streetscapes and in the private development, and pull that into the park. So we have some of the brick, we have some of the stone masonry and granite that are part of the building. that are part of the paving materials here. And we'll look in a little bit of detail here in the pavilion at a moment. And we also have a significant amount of limestone that's part of the walls and the retaining systems around here. In the next image, we're starting to work our way north. So this is the second half of the view. The view we just looked at would be off to the left-hand side of the page. And this is where we have an open lawn space for flexible community events and activities. We have a ridge pathway that takes you along roughly where the former Riverside Drive was located. So you're at the top of the ridge looking down towards the river. We have a connection to the underpass that goes under John Shields Parkway, as well as a connection where it comes across at grade. And then we have a low retaining wall along Riverside Drive, which we'll look at again in detail. On the next slide, I want to highlight in orange, it's a little bit difficult to see the print on the screen, but the white rectangle you see there with the orange L, this is the pavilion that's at the east landing here. And I'm gonna have Dan Haynes talk a little bit about the progress that we've made on that structure today.
Great. Thank you, Darren. Thank you, council. So we've been made quite a bit of progress on this pavilion. What we're trying to do is the pavilion has been situated so that it is sort of at the terminus of Bridge Park, but it's off to the side so that the key component is the pedestrian flow that goes between, in front of it, onto the Bridge Park. Architecturally, it's also meant to be a secondary building with the bridge itself as being the primary focal point into the area. Can I move forward here? Oh, perfect. So here, it's about making sure that we have a shelter pavilion in the park. The key component is that it's on a very slight raised step, but it would also be fully accessible. The idea is that the pavilion will be of a wood underside and we also have a combination of glass and wood side onto it, as well as some interesting lighting features to it as well, too. We've also got some limestone at the base. And as we looked at, am I, sorry. Here we go. We go to the next slide. We've looked at a couple of options on the front. After we've presented this to the Architectural Review Board, they had some options that we thought would be best to bring in front of you. So those being on, the image on the right is a limestone entrance front. As you can see, and then on the left, we're doing that with a wood front. I think as we've worked through as a design team, we really liked the wood front on the piece. But those are some options that we're bringing in front of you. The next slide is a similar thing. The detailing would be similar, but there's just the two separate materials. Going to the next slide as well. This right here would also show that the pavilion would be used throughout the year. Hopefully, we don't see any more days like we have on the right for a few more days. But, you know, we are contemplating, it is designed to have a fireplace as a focal point under the canopy piece. And also that lighting will be a key component to the facility. So it could be used in evening hours as well, too, architectural component. We go to the next slide. Then the last piece that we looked at on the, we went through the DRB, was the notion of adding a green roof. So the green roof would be having, under the main, on top of the main facility itself, we would be getting a cedum roof on there. And these are the options that we presented with that. So the benefit of that be views from Bridge Park looking down upon it. So we brought that. That was a request from the Architectural Review Board. I think, that's it for their question.
I've got a question for the architect. You propose either stone or a wood facade?
That is correct. And that is just at the south facade, right? So if we look at that one on LA, so the stone would be just at the south and that would mirror what we're doing at the fireplace. So those would be at the north and south.
My question being, so, you know, I've seen a lot of wood and it's outside. And then, you know, you put polyurethane on. And if you don't keep it up constantly, then it gets that really, you got the shiny, pretty part where it's preserved. And then the worn part where the rain hit it on an angle isn't. And then you've gotta be sanding it and staining it all the time. And I've seen that with oak benches and things, too. Is this set up in such a way that the overhang protects the wood so that we don't have to worry about that constant maintenance problem?
Correct. Definitely the stuff that's under that overhang will be fully protected. What we're looking at here on the south side would be that that would be, you would probably have a little more maintenance on the south side for that wood there. And thus, we're proposing the limestone piece for that.
Okay, so you're gonna do limestone on the south and wood on the other?
And woods on the other three sides. And then there's also limestone already around that fireplace.
I just wanted to get out of the maintenance cycle of taking care of this. There's a restaurant on High Street and I watched them do it in really beautiful wood and they stained it out with polyurethane. And within a year and a half, now it's gray. Parts of it still naturally wood with nice grain. The rest of it's just turned gray. Now it's gonna require they stain and sand the thing down and try to recondition it constantly. And just didn't want that to happen. Thank you.
One of the other major features of the east landing and plazas is a water feature. So in some of our previous discussions, we've talked about the opportunity to have what we would maybe compare to Ballantyne as a smaller scale, less intensive type of interactive water feature where you don't have sort of the run-through splash pad. But you do have the opportunity for that wonderful white noise, that great cooling effect, you know, fun for kids, sort of reach in and touch. So we've developed that, that you see in the letter M here. And we have a few views. This both, this is a view from the lower East Plaza looking west. And you can see that that would be a great amenity for the plaza itself, again, for the noise and the activity there. But we also have the opportunity in the next slide to see the potential coming off the pedestrian bridge as you're looking east here, to have that feature be incorporated into your view in the eastern threshold to the neighborhood on the east side of the river here. And then in the last view, you can see a little bit of an overview of how those work together. So this would be a condition where the substrate that's beneath the water that you see would be stone. So that in the season, when the water's turned off, you don't have sort of a bare blank concrete basin. You have this sort of integrated into the architectural qualities of the plaza there. So you'd have a nice stone that's underneath the water. And this would be an effect, again, both for the landing and visually as you're coming off the bridge. I think a nice complement to some of the programming and other activities that we'll talk about in a little bit as well.
Just one quick.
One question on that, and I don't know how you're, you know, you're, I see the white wall of water. And I also know that for every vertical foot of water, you usually need three feet of horizontal catch base. And I was just looking at this and it's, it looks like it's five, six feet tall. And, you know, there might be two feet of catch base. And I noticed that in all the fountains, when they're designed, if they don't get the horizontal component correct, there's always a chance burning out the pumps, constant refilling, and the automatic refill device running all the time, filling the basin. And that's an expense and a big giant hassle, so.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure how this water, from this illustration, water wall works. You know, whether you're thinking about adhesion and that's why you need a narrower base, or if this thing's flowing over, you know, you probably need a wider catch base. And this might be all too early. Anyone would be asking you this. This might be.
No, it's a good question. And I think one of the things we're gonna explore as we get into detail on this is what is the level of roughness that we want to have on that surface so that you get a little bit of the white water and a little bit of additional noise? But then what's the implication from a water catchment standpoint? So it's a good observation and that's a detail that we'll need to work through.
Darren, I apologize. I didn't know if we were saving our questions to the end or if you wanted us to.
Either way, it's fine. Yeah.
Well, it looks like we've started down a path, so I'll continue down it in terms of this waterfall. I agree with John, there's not much of a catch there. I suppose you could, you know, round the top portion so that you actually channeled the water back into the feature. But I understand that this is designed in such a way, from reading the material, that it isn't to be interacted with physically.
It is, well, it's not, you know, the, for example, at Ballantyne, we have the flat deck and the jets that come up and kids run through it. It's a different kind of interaction. So it's the kind of thing that the kids would kind of come up to. And, you know, my one-year-old right now loves to, you know, splash into that. So it'd be kind of a reach-out and touch, you know, watch the water run over your fingers, but not the same level of kind of running activity that you'd see at, like a typical splash pad.
So you've mentioned that this would be, this park, you described Ballantyne as a less intensive use than this park.
I may have said that, I may have inverted that, if that's what I said. Yeah, Ballantyne is much more intensive water use than what we're envisioning.
But in terms of people, what quantity of people is this park designed to operate with on a regular basis?
It's gonna vary depending on whether there's planned activities or events. We could follow up from this. We had put together, when we looked at both the West Plaza and the East Plaza, and the lawn, too, we had put together some numbers based on typical event capacities. So whether you have blanket seating or whether you have standing room only. And we can follow up with that information to share those. So in an event capacity standpoint, you know, let's say you had some fireworks or some other community event there, you could fit thousands of people into this east side lawn and plaza. But certainly on days, you know, just a pleasant day like today when you're out there, you know, you may have dozens that are out there using it, depending on the times. But we can get you some of those numbers.
I'd like to see some anticipated use on regular, you know, on a typical day. And then use of what, if we maxed it out, what it could be. Going back to the water feature, it's my understanding from the drawings, and they were a little bit hard to read because they were reduced such that it, the numbers were difficult to see, top of wall, bottom of wall, those kind of numbers were difficult. So that, the area just under the waterfall there, that's a small retaining wall kind of thing, six inches or so off the ground. Is that correct?
The area that's catching the water down here?
That gray, yes, that gray thing right there.
I think what you'd actually see is a slightly raised lip around the base, which would then, there would be a lower area, a basin that that's spilling into and then getting recirculated.
So I'm wondering if we are planning on interacting with the water on some level here, how, what is the elevation change from your lip, it looks to be six inches or so, to the bottom of the basin where the water is caught?
Yeah, well, there will be, I don't know if you've had a chance to look downtown. We have on Civic Center Drive, sort of a similar format, and the Museum of Art as well, where you have stones that can be, so that it's not an open trough that you would fall into. It's, you have stones that are mounted on there with gaps between the stones. They have no mortar or any fill material, so the water can pass through. Or you could use a grate there alternately. It allows you to come and, you know, if you wanted to stand or step there, you could without being actually in the basin.
So my preference would be that there isn't any obstacles to getting to that point. That, you know, if it, there had to be a slope to retain the water in a lower section. But that if, it appears to be about five feet tall, you know, that kids could actually interact with the water in a more meaningful way. And then it would spill down into concrete like you see at the Spray Park at Easton, and then the water just disappears.
Right.
But there's nothing to fall into, there's nothing to trip over. There's, you know, no headlong thing of some small child trying to reach for the water and ending up on their face.
Yes.
That kind of puddle. I would prefer to see something that would be far more interactive in that water feature and something that I think would be more safe than something that would have a trough, sort of. What this looks like and what the drawings indicated to me. It looked like the trough was about 18 inches deep in the drawings. I didn't see any grates or things like that in those drawings either.
It would absolutely have a grate or a paver on top of that, yeah. We wouldn't have an open 18-inch-deep trough.
I would prefer to have nothing. So that if somebody walked in there, it would be a perforated ground catch, maybe concrete or something on top with some openings that were covered, similar to what you see in many of the Spray Parks that would.
I think based on the concerns you have about safety and the ability to have more interaction with it, I think we can absolutely accomplish those.
Because if we're not going to be able to touch the river from this side of the park, I'd like families to be able to go to the riverfront park and touch water.
Right.
Even if it isn't the river.
Yeah.
And I guess technically you could touch this, although in my mind, it's a little bit difficult and perhaps a bit dangerous.
I think the intent matches with your goals. And even if we need to look at expanding a little bit more pavement there, whether that's for water catchment or just because of wear, because, you know, it's exciting for kids to come up and use that portion of it. And, you know, we'll start to work through those details. But we've got some great examples that I mentioned before that we've worked on at the Museum of Art and downtown on Civic Center Drive that have that great flat surface that allows the water to come through, but the kids can get right up to it without any safety concerns. So I definitely think we can accomplish that.
And I would agree with that also from a disability perspective. Because if you're in a wheelchair and you're having to reach across a lip of some sort, that's gonna be really challenging and potentially also dangerous for folks that may have some physical limitations. So I couldn't agree more about having the ability to really come right up onto the water.
Where would that, those changes be incorporated, Darren?
Where would they be incorporated?
Yeah, will we see this again?
Well, the, oh, I'm sorry, did you say when or?
Where. No, I don't mean where physically, but where in the process?
Well, that's, you know, part of this process. We are, the final site plan is somewhere in the neighborhood of 45% complete construction documents. So the general design intent, as we're presenting today, would be refined and developed based on comment we received from this group. So based on coming out of this discussion, some of the immediate tasks that we would start to look at would be the catchment, the safety, the accessibility, those type of things, and make sure that that's incorporated into this overall intent.
And then that comes back again to us at some point to see your changes?
This would be the final approval of that tonight, so you wouldn't necessarily see that again.
Unless we asked for it.
Sure. I mean, it could be as a condition of approval as well. That's an option.
So what, can you just walk us through the process about from where this goes next? And could you also share sort of the points at which there's been public input and review of these as well?
Sure, absolutely. I can do that. So this is the final development plan and site plan for this particular project. So the basic plan that came before would have been that first step. This is then the last step that needs formal approval or determination by council this evening. And then from there, it would go to the next level of construction drawings and through the CIP process for funding and phasing on all of those pieces. But this would be the final time that council would see that tonight, again, unless council directs us otherwise. And in terms of public review, this has been, as I said before, 2013, there was a lot of initial public input. And then as we've gone through the various steps, these have been part of Planning Commission and ARB special meetings to be reviewed. With the last time that this was seen by them was actually in January of this year where they had seen a preliminary version of this particular.
I meant sort of the greater public, the residents. When was the last time they got to see what this potentially looks like? Not just the commission's report.
Sure. It hasn't gone to them in a formal review capacity. Again, because we're carrying out the direction that was provided to us back in 2013 to that initial.
We, Ms. Urmann, I don't know if you recall the exact date, but we did have a public meeting where we shared the park plan that, you know, in an earlier form that you're looking at. And this was subsequent to 2013 informed the master plan. We had subsequent public meeting, H-WA meeting, other touch points where we reviewed and got some feedback on the types of activities and features and the general character of this as we went through the public process. And we can put together a summary of what those public engagement points have been. But I don't recall the exact dates off the top.
Yeah, I just think.
We also solicit, I'd just like to add, input from the public in addition to that through website. And we promoted that as other ways to get ideas in that for people who couldn't attend meetings. So I just don't want that to be lost as well.
Yeah, I was just wondering, I know I was involved in P&amp;Z fairly early on in the process when it was in concept form. We didn't really, when I was there, didn't see these. I just, this is such an important amenity to the city. This will be our central park, we're all hoping. And I just think that's so vital that the residents have a lot of input into this, their park. And so I think that's an important, I don't know what my colleagues think about this, but I think that's important and I want to make sure we give that the time it takes to get that feedback.
I agree with Kathy. I think one of the things I will compliment you on is in looking at the uses for the park, the different areas, we'll be able to integrate all these wonderful uses. But I do know that in the past, and I want to be sure that we meet the needs of what the residents expect or the citizens expect. we meet the needs of what the residents expect or the citizens expect, and one of them was access to the river. And we're not really getting much of that at all. I actually walked this space today, and I noticed a couple of things. One was the access to the river, and I saw that the two places that you can actually overlook were actually, one was pretty far to the south, which you'd have to walk quite a distance to get to, and the other one I, I actually liked that was kind of curved and overlooked the river. But, but I do feel as if this really needs to have some public eyes on it before we actually make a decision to let this move forward, and I don't know that that would, that, I think we should get some opinions on whether or not they like the plan. And, and the other thing that the public, I can saw in the, in the 13 was that they were looking for some more naturalistic feelings. And this is, this is pretty contemporary and streamlined, so I, so I would love to hear the feedback on that.
If we could, just for a moment, because there are a couple of great things you touched on there, starting with river access, could we back up to the master plan? Because I prefaced before, this is largely a natural park. We happen to be focusing on one of the more intensively hardscaped portions of it. So as most of us know from, let's go back one more.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. So as most of us know from being out on site, the east side where we're focusing now has fairly steep bluffs. So we do have river access planned, it's number seven here, and we can show you where that also translates into the current final site plan that's in front of you. And it is a challenge down there, but we agree that we want to have that access to the river, and we want to try and get it on both sides. The, the greater opportunity, of course, is on the west side, where you have more of the gentle floodplain environment there. So we have significant access there. You can see, again, this is sort of a long-range conceptual master plan, but you can see the idea of some trailhead parking that would allow for an accessible route to the river, the potential to get small, you know, kayaks and canoes from there down to the river. And you can see a couple of touchpoints, some that exist just south of the bridge, and in a number of places, not all of them are labeled here, and it's a little faint to see, but a number of places where you want to get down and allow folks to engage with the river. So I think taking the park its entirety, not just the portion of the Phase 1 final site plan that's before you, I think what we're hearing is really a great reinforcement of what we have heard publicly about access to the river. And I think we do want to provide that. It's a little bit of a challenge on the east side, but we, we do have that opportunity as well as part of this, this final site plan that's being proposed.
So Darren, can you explain that number seven? What's going on at number seven?
So let's, let's fast forward. So this is, Mayor, this is the master plan. So if we can go ahead, two slides, please. So you can see number five here, this is where we're looking at access down to the river. And one of the things we want to be careful of is we will not be able to achieve an accessible ramp, an accessible route down to the river on the east side. It's a very long drop, it's a fairly steep bluff. So what we want to do is, this is going to be more of a naturalized access. So instead of broad concrete staircases and that sort of thing, this is going to be more of an inform, I'll think of like a Metro Park, you know, where we have some embedded stones, et cetera, where you can find your way down to the river, but we're really not able to create an accessible route. So that's what you're seeing at number five.
So you, but you do have accessible routes, it looks like, from either side of the pavilion to get down to sort of the...
That's correct.
That, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think we discussed this in great detail earlier about the aspect that the east side of the river is a cliff, and it's really hard to access it, you know, to get down to the river, whereas on the west side, we went through lots of maculations coming up with this thing to get people down to the river. I think, you know, we went over and over that, and it's just a geographical problem, which really keeps us from, you know, doing that. I want to say that I was very much pleased with the hard surfaces, we actually got to select them, but it was very wise, what you guys have done, because acidic concrete pavers that were going to get eaten up, you know, you use clay pavers everywhere and other hard surfaces that are going to probably test, take the test of time very well, and probably be here again in 30, 40 years. So you use really high-quality, rather expensive, mind you, but good quality materials in all the hard surfaces, including the curbs and everything else. The thing is, on sheet L5, I was just thinking, and when I was thinking about this maybe six, seven years ago, when we were messing around on this idea, one of the fun things about Milwaukee, Wisconsin, is that they have a green space, and this is sort of a miniature Milwaukee, Wisconsin in a way, and they, and I don't know if you've been up there, but there's a beautiful green space along the river, and every weekend, they either have ribs and jazz, Irish, French, German, any nationality under the sun, and there's always something fun to do in that city. So you don't have to leave the city. The city has, in, over time, brought in, or enough people volunteered to bring in, Korean festivals and Japanese festivals. So you just really had a fun center, and I, I was hoping for the next 20, 30 years for our citizenry, that, you know, this is the place, because we got the parking garages built now, now you can go through the tunnel or just walk across the street, and get to this green space, which could have tents and activities related to all these different ethnic groups. And I guess we got 30 or 40 different languages in our schools right now. So, yeah, this would take a long time, and we probably won't be here to see all this develop, but it'd be really a fun place to live in the future. So, and I think we're heading in that direction, and sheet L5 leaves it open enough for that to happen. The other belief I have on this thing is, as both of you mentioned, that over time, I think we're going to start adding amenities as we figure the space out, and maybe there will be giant stairs going all the way down to the river someday, you know, from this side, which would be expensive, and it's a steep drop, and, and, but, so I think over time, we're going to upgrade this park, and it's going to be future city councils, you know, way in the future that make this a more interesting park as they get ideas.
The Milwaukee example's a good one, and at the end of the presentation, one of the questions that we've gotten, both in our public discussions and with Planning and Zoning Commission and ARB and in this group, has to do with what are the activities that are envisioned there. So Mr. Erman, at the end of the presentation, is going to share with you a little bit of the thoughts that have been developed on programming for that, and how the spaces that we've created support that initially, and then, of course, how we let that evolve and grow over time is important as well.
If I could add just one comment. One thing that tends to get lost on this east side, on the east side of the river, when you look at, look at this project, is that to the north of that is river access, which the city invested significant dollars on, underneath the Emerald Parkway Bridge. So there's great access down there for fishing and all of that. And I think one of the forgotten gems often is the Kiwanis Wetlands Park, I'm sorry, that's to the north, and then the Wetlands Park to the south, on the other side of the 161 bridge and down that direction, which this would ultimately have connectivity to, or does, it's just a beautiful wetlands park that's, you can get right down and walk the edge of the river very safely with great access. So we, we tend to not highlight that in this, but on that east side of the river, while you've got this cliff thing right there between 161 and Emerald Parkway, you've got great access points just north and south of that, which the city over the years has made great investment in.
And we have a path designed to connect those, it's in this view, so you see this ridgeline path extends off to the north, to that location you mentioned, and to the south as well.
And there's plenty of access on the other side of the river as well, right?
That, well, that's correct, is that, is that portion of the park is improved, of course, right now, it's, you know, largely floodplain, but yes, there will be.
How are you handling handicap parking?
Sorry?
Handicap parking for people who can't walk all the way from the garage or...
We have some accessible, I don't know if they're marked on here, some accessible spaces that exist in the, in the portions of Riverside Drive that have been improved, so there's on-street accessible spaces in the garage. And those, those are really the two primary parking options for the east side access to the park. We don't have a parking lot, in other words, on the east side.
Darren, can you help me understand the, the slope of this, this green space from the bottom of the retaining wall listed as N on this, on this drawing, to D to the north and south, and B to the east?
Okay. Let me, can we forward to...
So I, I have the drawings out with contour lines. It looks like there's somewhere between a 10 and 15-foot change in the grade.
That's correct. So we have a rendering that gives you a sense of that, but in our previous council presentation, we had some images, because you can go out there today. You can, it is rough graded today if you go out onto this site, so from Riverside Drive, if you wanted to walk down, and really, that's the litmus test. You know, so certainly we can share with you the percent slope, but if you go out there today, the one big change from what exists out there now to what's being proposed is that, that's, that slope that you just mentioned from N down to the path D is going to get a little more gradual, because we're going to be creating a low retaining wall along Riverside Drive. So again, if you look at this view, it gives you a little bit of a visual sense of that slope, or if you go out there, you can get sort of a firsthand understanding of it. But it's going to be relatively gradual, and this wall both will provide some options for seating, as well as flattening out and creating a little bit of buffer between this park and the roadway itself.
I would like to know, I, I would like a drawing with slopes finished at grade slopes, because it's really difficult to tell. I, I think these contour lines are existing conditions. They're not labeled as such, but that's my interpretation of these drawings.
Yeah, we can provide that, absolutely.
Because that image, to me, looks really flat. That, with that 18-inch, I'm, I'm assuming it's 18 to 20-inch wall, if it's seat height, down to that path, I, I'm trying to figure out how you make up...
So those are all great concerns. I, you know, at the risk of repeating myself, I think the best way to get a feel for it, because it exists, you could go out there and walk it. So if you're out, if you're out there and you have some concerns about the, the steepness of the slope, we're, we're actually going to be leveling that out a little bit, but it's, it's not too far off today from what the future condition will be, with the exception of, of adding this retaining wall there. But we absolutely can provide you the percent slopes all along there and cut some cross-sections that will, will give you those details.
Great. I had a couple of questions about lighting. Now, the, the plan is this park is open 24/7, 365? I'm looking at Matt, Zach.
In all probability, there's really no way we would be able to enforce that. There are probably segments of the park, particularly on the west side, and some of the more hidden areas that we might need to enforce a little bit more thoroughly. But this is an open space, and it's an active area, so, you know, the time of day is pretty much going to be...
And, and in the pavilion, the, the facilities open 24/7 or no?
That has not yet been determined. I think that's going to be dependent on need and whether we have programming and things till certain hours and so forth, or something, something certainly to take into consideration.
And I was just wondering, the lighting, I, I don't, my drawings were different than the images we're seeing tonight, so I'm struggling, none of them match, so your L's don't match or whatever, but on one of the images, so I don't know the number, I, I counted about five light, lighting poles in the park, and then two or three other ground illuminations. Is that the extent of the lighting, or did I not, do I not have that right?
We have a sheet that shows the lighting summary on here. I'll, I'll give you a quick snapshot of what that would look like. Okay, so this shows the two sort of split views of the southern, southern and northern half of the park. And the area that, that we're calling the upper plaza here where the, the pavilion is...
Yeah.
That's where we want to use embedded lighting in the stairs, underrail lighting, the ambient light from the building, because we want the, the lighting of the pedestrian bridge to be highly visible through there. We don't want to, we don't want to over, well, we don't want to overlight any of the park, but particularly in that area, we want the views to the bridge to be highlighted. So that's going to be very subtle accent lighting that's in the, the upper plaza area. And then in the balance of this, where we have the trails lit, this is the fixture that's currently on John Schultz Parkway, and that's going to be the predominant fixture that you would see on these pathways. And then fixture B would be specific to this lower landing here.
So do I understand this, that there's, there's one, there's one light post? I'm, I'm now on the south side.
No.
One on each side, there's two, or you're just saying that...
There would be, there would be a regular spacing of those posts.
Okay, so this is just, just indicating. So are these ground lights with the, that illumination, or are these...
They're, they're pedestrian scale, so similar to John Schultz Parkway. Are they 14s, 16, 16-foot high poles, yeah?
While we're on lighting, I didn't mention earlier, because I thought we were saving our questions to the end, the lighting that is in the pavilion itself, it looks like behind the glass, there are bar lights mounted to the wall that shine out. I think, given how dark this area is going to be, you, you know very well, sometimes light makes things darker if you see the source. So I think that those lights that are mounted on that wall actually make it darker.
Okay.
Because it is a bright light shining into your eye versus ambient light or deflected light, as opposed to, you know, light that is lighting your path or an area.
Yeah. I think the goal with those would be more of a glow. It's more of a diffuse light than a, kind of looking into a flood or a spotlight. But I think your observation's correct, that, that would be the case, if we had sort of a bright light source.
Can, can you pull that image up, please? I think it was early on, second, third, fourth image. There. You can see those, those light bars in there. On, on the drawings that we were provided, it looks significantly brighter even than that, but up, up close with that, and I'm sure there, it's an LED sort of thing coming straight at you, that would be really bright. So I, I would not be in favor of really seeing any light sources in, in this. And I think the, the pathlights are well done, they're, they're domed over, and the light is reflective, so it comes up on the dome, and then it goes down to the ground.
Yeah.
I think that's the...
You know, with any park or public space, and it's, it's a challenge, you know, in this forum to talk about, and it's a challenge for us frankly as designers, is, I'll say roadways are easy, in air quotes, because you have regulatory control over, you know, how even the illumination is, the amount of illumination, you know, you need to meet certain foot candle requirements, and, you know, have that be even for the safety of operating a motor vehicle. And you have recommendations for gas stations and egress and other types of things. You know, parks and public space, you're trying to walk that fine line between creating space that doesn't feel dark and dangerous, and you feel like you're going to trip or be surprised by someone behind a bush, but you certainly don't want it to feel like a, a gas station that's overlit. So I think all of these comments are right on track in terms of respecting dark skies, adjacent residents, not sort of being overpowered by looking at direct sources. And I think those are all things that we will definitely sort of take into account when we refine the lighting design for this, so that we walk that, that appropriate line between those two concerns.
I would like to recommend to council the consideration of, this is such an important piece, that to try to decide this tonight seems to me like short-sighting it. I personally would, one, love to have the community have an opportunity to take a look at it. And secondly, I, I would love to have another session that we just simply talk about this together, and allowing the community to come in and, and hear what they have to say, and hear what we have to say, and what you have to say. This is such, you've done a beautiful job of capturing a lot of the, of the activities and the spaces, and I can see where it can be beautifully lit so that you have a softness that approaches the river in a way that people have never approached it before. But I know I personally would not be comfortable tonight with the questions that we've asked without a little further study on it, even sitting down with you at the work session to talk about these things. So I would ask council to consider that possibility.
I think you're probably only halfway through your present, are, how many slides do you have additional for?
We do have some more to share if, if you'd like to see the rest of that.
And then we can talk about how we're going to move forward.
The test is to see if you remember exactly where we left off. Right, so if we back up one slide, perfect. So we talked about the water feature. The next element that you see in orange here are terraces. And the idea here is that we do have grade change that you mentioned before, from street grade down to, I'll say, prior street grade, the old Riverside Drive where you see that ridge trail. And so that creates both a practical constraint in the sense that we need to provide accessible route, which we do, but it also creates an opportunity. So these terraces are part of the social experience of the park, where you can have a place to sit and nature view, you can people-watch. And the slide on the, the next image shows the character of those. A lot of these are from Public Square in Cleveland, but the idea of some of these sinuous forms that are sort of in keeping with the aesthetic that we have along this Riverside Park, to create these great broad benches, one of the things... create these great broad benches. One of the things that I like about monumental benches is that, I think we've even talked about in this group before, when you have an off-the-shelf six-foot bench, if you order an iron bench, usually only one person sits there, you know, unless you're in Bryant Park or, you know, Manhattan somewhere where it's just, it's at a premium. So the idea of these monumental benches, I love because you can just get different ways that people can sit in small groups or big families or individual and find your own space. So this is the general idea for those terraces that you see on the hillside. And then similar to that, and this picks up on a previous discussion we have, if you look at the retaining wall that's in, that you mentioned before, again, this serves a couple of purposes, and if we go one more slide, we can see the larger extent of it. This creates a little bit of a buffer between the park and the roadway. It allows us to flatten grade out a little bit, and it also gives us some built-in seating. And maybe we can go one, I think it's one more to that rendering. And one of the concerns that have been brought up previously is the grade change there. So we have made this much more gradual. We've put some built-in seating. You can see the steps that take you from the street parking down into the park. And again, this keeps, you know, some of the balls and things from rolling, of course, they'd have to roll up, but rolling out into the road, and also allows us to flatten this out a little bit and create that great continuity along Riverside Drive there at the edge of the park. And this is a limestone wall that's proposed currently.
This is the East Park Planting Plan. It's largely unchanged from what you saw at basic site plan. It's a turf and trees landscape with some ornamental plantings and planters within the plazas. Otherwise, we're proposing turf and deciduous shade trees. There are also some colors that have been layered onto this plan, which indicate the condition of trees that we requested to have graded at areas of, that had a high concentration of construction impacting the slope or the bluff, and also potentially some opportunity for views. So what you see there are trees in green, are existing trees that we've had surveyed and know the caliber of, but have not had graded. The trees in yellow are in good condition, in orange are in fair condition, and trees in red are in poor condition. So with regard to trees that would potentially be removed, the thinking currently is that we would only address invasive trees, trees in poor condition, and trees that would be impacted by construction.
So the trees that are colored here are not slated to be removed? Other than green? Green, I read this as green stays, yellow, orange, and red go?
No, not quite. Green are existing trees where, again, we would only be addressing dead wood and things like that. The colored trees, it's just an indication of the grade that they were given when they were surveyed based on their condition, whether they were dead, whether there's a lot of ash trees.
So what condition are the green trees in?
We do not have the grade for the trees along the entire length of the corridor. We only have caliper size and location at this point. But there's always the opportunity to get additional information in any areas that we may feel might be significant.
Like, how did, how did they decide? Like, there's a cluster there that they must have, I don't know what you call it, graded or whatever, but then there's ones next with it that they didn't. Like, how do they decide what trees degrade and what not?
Well, again, we're focused, you can see it's focused on the area, the construction of the bridge and predominantly the upper landing, the overlook to the south, and then if you advance the slide, the area of the river access. So it's basically, we're focusing on areas where we felt like the construction would be impacting vegetation.
The only drawing we have that indicates the tree removal is that one with the shaded trees and there's two different, they were taken at two different points in time.
The surveys, the tree surveys?
Yes.
Yes.
And so it was a little confusing because the numbers started over with As and Bs behind them. So, sorry, there's a lot of drawings here. Try to get, is this what you want? Right here. TSO2, like tree survey that, so the only one, only trees that are looking to be removed are, there's a very small number of shaded ones. I'm going to guess less than a dozen on these drawings?
I believe we've got 39 total shown right now.
To be removed?
Yes.
Do you have that on any of the? I was assuming, I was trying to overlay the two drawings and I was thinking that these shaded ones were in the same locations as these colored ones, but that's not correct. Because this we don't, I don't think, do we have this drawing in here? L26?
You don't have that in the black and white set of design documents. I believe it was provided as part of the color final site plan.
It is included in the back. It should be the last five sheets, should be the colored rendering. They're numbered different, they numbered them different for their presentations, so I'm sorry for the confusion on that. The sheets are included, they're just numbered.
We have different slides. The images are different, too, from what we're looking at here, so. Okay, so this L26 is L29-ish, except for the G and H's aren't there.
Right, they added those images out.
I apologize, I seem to have pulled this particular slide out of order. It was the last area that we were looking at, though. So what this is indicating, and at times it's difficult to tell because there's areas like this tree here, where you have a large canopy tree with a tree in poor condition underneath it. So the red tree in poor condition is actually what's slated to be removed. And you'll see that generally, the only trees that we're showing coming out here are trees in poor condition. There are few that we feel it's going to be very challenging to provide the access down that we were discussing previously without impacting some of them.
If I might add, I just want to make sure that, maybe I can simplify this by the policy that we have given direction for them to pursue for this master, for this final site plan, and that is that no trees are to be removed as part of this plan, with the exception of those that have to be removed for construction, or if they are dead trees in the way of any type of view that can be removed without damage to other vegetation. The only other thing that was going to be removed from this was the honeysuckle that is at the very top of the bench of the cliff, that can be removed without adverse affecting the integrity of the cliff itself. I hope that helps clarify. The conditions that were included on this were by means of just understanding the conditions of the trees at certain strategic spots for view sheds and so forth to get an understanding. It's our intent to not to remove any of these, and at a future time, if there is any indication that we need to remove anything, we will not do so without maybe an onsite visit to the site to look and see what it is, with those who want to be included in that, so that we're all on the same page, that, so that we are not removing any trees that are unnecessary.
I think that's fantastic, Matt, and I really applaud you for taking that stance moving forward, because I know on the west side of the river, it was almost clear-cut, everything in the path, and it was a wide swath. And I hope that we're far more sensitive on the east side of the river, because it's going to be significantly more difficult to reestablish anything there. So thank you for that, and I do appreciate that.
Did you click down?
Are there any other questions about trees?
Are you going to talk plantings a little bit more or?
Sure.
Up near the pavilion, I saw in one of the earlier pictures, again, I don't have that one necessarily, I saw a couple planters near the water feature of flowers. What other planters? I mean, we have, yeah, there. Are those the only two planted beds?
You can see, I guess in the background beyond that, across the plaza, there's a planter on that side, too. And then it's just off view to the, out of view to the left, there's also a planter on the northeast side of the plaza.
Do we have a view from the pavilion on the, I guess, what it would be, the south side looking north? Do we have a rendering?
I don't think we do in this package.
Because that is quite, that's the lower terrace, right? So there's quite a, I don't want to say elevation change, are there stairs or?
Yeah, you can see, it's a little bit difficult to tell, there's stairs here.
Yeah.
And then there's an accessible route that runs here.
And on the other side?
On the side?
On, let's see, where am I? On the south side.
The south side, there are no stairs down, there's an accessible route.
There's a wall there?
Uh huh, that's correct, yeah.
And then there's a railing?
That's correct.
Is that right? How far is that drop from the, or that elevation change from the?
It's, so if you go from Riverside Drive down to the old Riverside Drive, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 12 to 16 feet, depending on where you are in the length of the park. So that wall that you're just asking about on the south side effectively goes from nothing, and then it stays roughly level, you know, to that 14-foot high grade as you get down to the path. That makes sense?
I'm not sure I'm following you. Okay.
Great, so as you come.
A picture of that would be cool.
If you come off the street, we have a very flat gradual grade that takes you to the pedestrian bridge and across, but grade drops as you go towards the river. So up here, you're flush with the plaza, here you're plus or minus three feet, here you're plus or minus six to eight feet, you know, on down to that 14-foot. So as grade drops against the plaza, that wall grows.
Okay. So on the, the planters here, you know, there's a lot of, in this particular rendering, to me, a fairly heavy cement feel to this. And I get it's the crossing and, and then some of the other terrace seating that you showed, to me, you know, to soften that, I don't know what you're thinking about plantings behind it, I mean, in those renderings you showed of downtown, what's going to be behind those terraces or how is that?
We'll have shade trees sort of mixed in and around those terraces that are on the slope to make sure that you've got a shady place to sit there.
But no plantings necessarily?
But the balance of the ground plant would just be turf that's currently proposed.
Turf, turf.
Yeah.
Because one of the, I think one of the great things about the park going in now is that we actually get a chance to see what's happened at Bridge Park and a feel for that. So context, of course, is everything right. So we're getting an opportunity, which I think is fantastic to do that. And I know there's a fair bit of this type, I would call it, cement seating or tier seating?
Yes.
There's a bit of it between some of the buildings, and I won't get my streets right. But you know what I'm talking about, some of the pocket plazas, right?
I do, yeah.
And when I look at them now, they feel, they feel a more cement to me than inviting to me. And then maybe we just haven't got to spring and we haven't got to the flowers yet. And I keep thinking to myself, to make that inviting, we need to break up that cement with.
Landscape.
Something, yeah. So I'm wondering what the plan is here. Otherwise, it feels to me, again, from the renderings, that we have a heavy cement feel to this.
Yeah, I think, you know, one of the shortcomings of the quick view that we've created here is you don't see a lot of texture there. You know, we have some stone that's built in around where the fountains are. The trees, we faded back quite a bit in this view, so they don't obscure some of what we're looking at. But I think we do want to make sure, one of the things that I like to do in urban environments is, where you have a lot of foot traffic, sometimes it's hard to get the ground plain, plant material, where turf, you know, works really well.
Sure, sure.
But if you do get a really great green canopy and you get that dappled light below and that shade above, I think you start to get the feel of a more lush green environment, even if the ground plain, you know, has more of the turf and that. So I think that's what we'll be looking at carefully to do, to make sure that this doesn't feel too stark or barren or hard.
Yeah, because that's our brand, right? Green is our brand. This is, this should feel lush and inviting and, and in these renderings, I know it's hard, but, and these feel, this feels a bit cold to me. We'll want to make sure we, we do that, because again, we're seeing how it's playing out a bit, you know?
Right.
Across the street.
Yeah. Now, I will say in some of those, I was out there in them today, there's a lot of plant material that hasn't been installed. And of course, we all know when it goes in, it's usually a little smaller and less attractive than when it matures, but great point.
Do you have more presentation for us?
We're almost finished with. No, that's fine.
My intention was to wait till the end, but that didn't happen.
So we have one more slide that shows some of the architectural components, and then Mr. Irman was going to share some of the initial thoughts on programming, and then we can open up again to questions, or we can talk about it as we go. Let's go back one more, yeah, thank you. So this is a view, and we are, this is an elevation, we're looking east, and you can see a cross-section of the pedestrian bridge here. So the buildings along Riverside Drive would be in the background, Bridge Park Avenue would kind of come through here, and then this is the pavilion that sits up above. And what we've done, I mentioned before, is from Riverside Drive, we have an accessible grade because we have this wide-open plaza, you have cross-slope in any direction you go. So we have less than 2% in any direction on that. So we can't have 5% down to the river or 8%. So we've kept that fairly level as you come out to the pedestrian bridge. And what that creates is the grade change we mentioned before, that you have about 14 feet plus or minus difference. And what that does is that accommodates the depth of the bridge here, plus the clearance we need to get a continuous path that would take you from north to south that runs along here. So you have a path that takes you up to Riverside Drive to this upper plaza and down at an accessible slope, and then this is the continuous ridge path that runs north to south from Emerald Parkway all the way to Kiwanis. So at the, at the plaza itself, you can see the pavilion above, you can see the handrail here that's sort of faded back. And then because we have that raised area, because we have the vault that accepts the pedestrian bridge, we had the ability to either fill this entire area with earth or use it as open space to help for the storage of some park maintenance equipment, et cetera, which we are showing here. So you can see some of the louvers for ventilation, you can see the access. So this area that's underneath the pavilion has the water feature mechanicals, it has some equipment storage to help again with the maintenance and operation of the park. And then you can see here, this is where the stair comes down from the plaza to the park. And then you asked about the south side, this is where you have the wall here and the rail, and this distance gradually decreases as you go back up towards Riverside Drive. And just the last comment on here, you can see some of the benchmark images, some from historic Dublin, of the idea of the limestone wall that you see, sort of a rustic look for most of this, but around the entry and at the, at the base of the bridge, the abutment of the bridge, we have some cut limestone.
I have a question. On sheet L30 of our plans, it has a retaining wall that I think is telling me is 10 feet tall, and then your sidewalk area, your access for the storage thing, and then a retaining wall, I think this is the 14 and a half foot tall retaining wall.
Yes.
So how long is this 10-foot wall? Does it run the length of the 14-foot tall wall?
I believe, let's, if we could go back to a plan view, it should show on there. Let's see, yeah, there we go. So this is the 14-foot high wall that's where the green marker is now. And then the north end of the 10-foot high wall roughly aligns with that, and then the south end extends, I don't know, maybe five to 10, five to 10 feet beyond it. So I would say generally speaking, the 10-foot wall and the 14-foot wall are roughly the same length.
So in the treatment of the top of the 10-foot wall, I'm assuming that's going to have to be a significant railing, something industrial strength?
We'll have to have guard protection there.
Because you're going to be operating vehicles, maintenance vehicles in and out of there. I would assume it's going to be, you know, four-wheelers and things like that that will remove the snow in the winter and, okay, so that'll be a, like a two-inch kind of steel, sort of tube steel railing?
Potentially, yeah.
Kind of thing? How about the railing on the top of the 14-foot tall wall? Because on the other side of that's going to be the plaza.
Right. So those, you know, in both cases, the 14-foot high wall is going to have more visibility than the lower wall. So in terms, where we're looking at the architectural qualities of that rating, railing, certainly we want to have something that's appealing up at that plaza level. That's where most people are going to be standing there, looking out over the bridge and the river, et cetera. The lower wall, not only will we have a railing there, but there may be some sections along that ridge path where we look at what is immediately on the downhill side of that, where we may want to have an additional curb and/or railing there as well. And so there will be some continuity of that railing design that you see all the way along the ridge path, all the way along the north-south extent. that you see all the way along the ridge path, all the way along the north-south extent of the park. So they'll probably have some relation architecturally, but they may not be the exact same railing.
So I think the relation of them is going to be important, even though the lower wall is lower. You know, as people, my concern about the appearance of this area is traveling west to east on the footbridge. Because nobody is going to walk across this bridge and look up hardly, or even just at the path. Every bridge I walk over, my eyes go over the side, because you are drawn to see what's down there.
Right.
And so this is going to have more sets of eyes on it, this 14-foot-tall wall and the 10-foot wall, than, than maybe any other place as you're traveling east on the bridge.
I think that's, I think that's absolutely right, yeah.
And so I think the size of the limestone facing, one, I hope that we're using real limestone, because the scale, i-if we put lickens, you know, if we put stone the side, the style of what's on the back wall-
I'm already sold. I agree with you.
I mean, it's going to have to be four feet, five feet boulder slices to make it look even close to being acceptable.
Yeah, yeah, we definitely want to use real stone.
And before I could sign off on a 14-foot tall, you know, there's a reason why the code limits retaining walls to four and six feet, because it's supposed to be pedestrian scale, right? 14 feet is not at all a pedestrian-scale wall. And so before I could sign off on this wall, I'd have to see the, it's got to be really special and really well-done. The stone has got to be exceptional, it's going to be hard to come by, and hard to transport, and expensive, and all of those things. And the railings have to be just right, because the eye is going to go down and you're going to see both railings in one frame of your mind.
Those are, I agree, those are very important details, absolutely. So the last piece of the presentation, Mr. Irman has some thoughts on programming and a little video to share.
If there's one thing that we've received the most feedback on is, it's basically, what do people want to do when they're at this park? What amenities do they want, what kind of activities and so forth? And I think one of the biggest challenges we have is when you start putting all of those hundreds of things that people want to do in this park and figuring out how to build the amenities to accommodate them. By the time you build a concession stand and a climbing wall and a zip line and a spray park and swing sets and all of these things, what you have is a fairly very limited park and what you can actually use it for other than those things. So the whole concept and the design from the beginning of this was primarily to capture some of that input and realize that when we were designing it, design it in such a way that you can accommodate all of those things, primarily on a temporary basis, on an evolving basis, no matter what time of day or season or day of the week or what have you. You, you may recall that we've recently redesigned how we actually structure our event permitting process. And, you know, we receive over 150 applications for types of events throughout the city each year. My expectation for this park, based on the number of phone calls we've already gotten, and we don't even have this thing even on, you know, broken ground yet, is I, I expect that to double just in this area. So in order to accommodate that, we've got to be prepared administratively, but also by the design of this, so that we're not stuck with, with a, a permanent physical structure that limits us from being able to evolve as the, as the needs and the wants of the community. And even, you know, the, the character and the personality of this whole district is going to be one in which is going to be very popular and ever-changing. So if you look at what, what we have up here, just a few examples, you know, the upper plaza there, a lot of outdoor seating with the ability for different kinds of, types of food carts and things like that that you'll see in, in urban settings. Some pop-up shops and, you know, small types of market-type areas. Some projected art types of pieces that we might want to consider, some seasonal decor, different types of events, small types of events and meetings. Those types of things, these aren't limited to the only things that we heard, but this is the kind of character that we were looking for, that's something that is, that allows us to evolve with these types of requests. And of course, the lower section there, the terrace area and the, and the plaza, with some group fitness exercise opportunities, some, you know, bring in some different types of furniture and allow people to explore a different feel and look of leisure, relaxation, so forth. The water feature itself will bring a little bit of attraction, some roaming art exhibits, temporary ice rink. You know, if there's one thing we've heard, a lot of people that have wanted a, an ice rink there. Once you build a permanent ice rink, you're going to be operating a permanent ice rink until the end of time. Very expensive, very time-consuming. There are portable temporary types of businesses out there that will come in and do that, and it's no burden on the city, and it's a lot more efficient based on the way they operate those types of activities. And then, of course, the lawn area, or the, the lawn area itself and the, the ability to access the lawn, it provides that linear structure that gives you an opportunity for lined type of events. We've got, you know, food truck rally picture up there, whether that's the most appropriate, not sure, but those types of ideas. You know, we heard the Ribbon Jazz Fest concept and bringing some of those types of events down to this area. And, you know, even a seasonal winter interest such as ice sculpting or snowman contests, or, you know, there's a variety of things that we have to work with here. And then, of course, a little bit larger events like Movies in the Park and Community Yoga, Fitness. There's a lot of things that you can do on a very large scale from a group fitness exercise type of field. Kite flying and summer entertainment types of things, and snow call, I mean, the list goes on and on and on about, you know, what you can do with not just specific areas of the park, but the park as, as an entire whole. One of the things we make, we made sure was that no matter what type of event we have out here, we don't want to limit the access to the, or from the general public to be able to enjoy whatever activity is down there. Having a closed type of event, whether it be a rental of some kind or a reservation, you know, bridal reception, those kinds of things, it limits what the general public can do down here. So we didn't design anything for the programming of that type of exclusive use of the park. And then, of course, the natural side of this, this area. Now, it's always seasonal-dependent, water-depth-dependent and so forth, but there are a few areas that people can access and wander literally along the river's edge. I've walked it a few times, it's quite amazing down there if you've never been. Now, this side is certainly not the more natural, naturalized area. There are a lot of man-made structures on this side, mainly because of the geography and the location between the river and the development itself. But capitalizing on making sure that area stays natural and it offers another view shed from even the west-side looking east to make sure that what people are enjoying on the west side are complemented by what is going on on the east side. There will be obviously canoe and kayak opportunities along the river. There's programming that we do and hold currently that we're planning on expanding, so it provides that river access and actually getting out on the river type of programming as well. And with that, we do have a brief video that we'd like to see if we can bring this together and help you understand from a visual, different dimensions or perspectives of, of this entire project. And hopefully it'll bring it together for more conversation. One of the challenges of watching that video is to try to find every little thing that you just talked about and figure out what it was looking like in that video. So that video will be available to you, and we'll make sure you get the link to that so you can look at it a little bit more in-depth.
Darren, I've got a question for you. If you have 45% construction drawings complete, what is the price tag on this park?
Couple items, I think the, what we've asked the design team to do on this is stay consistent with the capital budget estimates that we gave you in your approved CIP. What you've seen tonight is consistent with the CIP estimates. Obviously, at 45%, if this gets approved, we'll have them refine and update them even further. Based on 45%, they did that a few months back. But it is within the CIP estimates that we provided for you as part of your approved project, which were based-
You could remind me of that number, I'd appreciate it.
I think the phase one improvements over the five-year plan is about $22, $23 million.
Over the five-year?
Over the five-year plan. Can I, one other comment I'd like to make to council on this.
Did that answer your, are you looking at the cost of what we've spent in terms of the design to this point?
No, 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 no. No, he got it.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, so that would be all the west plaza, east plaza, all those elements of park improvements that are kind of programmed within your CIP.
Well, the east plaza is already, we already signed contracts for that, so...
Yeah, I'm saying that's, that's part of that number. You haven't signed contracts, you've approved the final development for the west plaza, but that's in that number as well. Actually, you'll have the infrastructure reimbursement agreement before you, probably in June, for the west plaza. You've approved the final development plan for the west plaza.
I, I realize that.
Yeah. One item just with regard to process, if this is moving forward for additional review, and obviously, council should get as comfortable with this as they need to. There is one conflict element that was discovered in association with the pedestrian bridge that kind of needs to happen as part of the pedestrian bridge work that's moving forward. And if I get this wrong, Megan will correct me on it. But as I understand it, that 10-foot wall that we're talking about, that, that holds in the path that goes underneath the pedestrian bridge, you don't want to build that wall after the pedestrian bridge is in place. That 10-foot wall has to go in place now. That's been being designed and worked on for months to kind of solve the technical problems, the detailed surveying in the field to get exactly what those slopes are, understanding how it will drain ultimately. None of the rail systems, none of the surface rock or those things will go on now, but the structural wall will need to go on now. Because as I understand it, the structural steel that's going to begin to go on the pedestrian bridge is slated to begin this summer, and so this work has to happen in June? Is that what it's slated for currently on that? So that element of a retaining wall, again, no details on stone, no details on, on any design elements, will be much more difficult, much more expensive to do if it has to happen post pedestrian bridge.
But the concerns that Chris brought up about the railing and what the stone on the sod-
That will not be done as part of this. This is strictly getting the structural stuff done as part of it.
You're just, you're just doing the reinforced concrete, right? None of the decorative part of it?
No.
Okay.
All structural stuff.
But the recommendations from the Planning and Zoning Commission and so forth, they did, they did not recommend approval of the waivers for the retaining wall heights.
The ART makes the formal recommendation, and they recommended approval of that.
But in the planning and zoning notes, they-
You're correct. They, they are not the required reviewing body for that, you are, obviously. So ART is the one that makes the recommendation to you. Planning Commission and ARB had informal review as part of that.
One other element we should share on the 14-foot wall, the rationale for that, and that is as it was in the basic plan that council approved. If you think about the design of the pedestrian bridge, there's that V-shaped, was it weather vane? Or whatever it is that kind of comes underneath, that projects down four feet. So once you take the four feet away, you've got 10-foot clearance on that path. The design engineers told us, you don't want anything less than that if you can possibly avoid it. That gives you your 14 feet of that pedestrian walkway, the vehicles and the other things that need to use that path over time results in that 14-foot clearance. It also then happens to create good usable space for the park people in the building that it accommodates to the east of that. But that's part of the minimum rationale that feeds that 14-foot height. One other element if I could add, historically, and I realized we had a number of council members here who weren't here when we presented the master plan for the park. At the time we did that, all of the comments from all of the citizens were presented to council in a great big packet, and kind of how the park plan responded to that. We had to get that back to council members, especially new council members, make sure you have the benefit of that.
I appreciate that, Terry. I think, I think for me, because it's been three years or four almost, that I've seen anything from residents. And, you know, a lot happens, designs change. I think we've, we're making great progress, but I, but I don't want to rush into it unless I get some feedback from how residents feel at some point. I don't think it's that much to ask, but I'll just make a couple more comments and then I'll, I'll let the rest of my council members speak about this. But I was out there today, and, and one of the things I noticed, and I would like to ask the question, on the pavement that is on the plaza level, is it the same color as what's on the other side? Or is that the natural orange brick that we have on the historic side?
It's the brick standard that's on the east side of the river.
It's the same thing, so it's that orange and, or the red and gray?
And the plaza on the west side is the same brick as in the historic district.
Okay.
So they both match their respective districts.
Okay, that makes sense. I have to agree with Kathy. I feel as if in looking at this concept, that there is a severity to it. When you stand out there, it's one long strip. And when you add things that create more longitudinal sense, especially if they're strong and they're hard-edged, I think it just reinforces that feeling. I, I love the intimacy of terraces, I think that's a great, that's a great piece. I would recommend taking a look at how that seating feels when you're there, how much softness of landscaping can buffer that feeling. I know people were looking for a naturalness to the river. I don't want to create a park that speaks to necessarily just Bridge Park. I want a park that speaks to the DNA, the character of our riverfront. And so even though we can pull elements from Bridge Street and the contemporaniness of it, I think that, that our community looks for the softness of natural settings. And I know that in 2013 at least, they talked about natural settings. So I, I would just caution that as you design, that you remember that people want the, the respite of the crazy urbanness of life, you know? And they, they're looking for soft places, they're looking, but they're also looking for the activity. I think you can get both, so that, those would be, those would be my thoughts.
Well, let's just go down the line, Kathy?
So Terry, I, I'd like to see some of that resident feedback. I think when I was on planning and zoning, we saw some of that in the early. It's just so different from concept phase to, 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 you know, where it is now on a piece, it's just different. So I think when we're going to spend $23 million and build the best park in central Ohio, which I think it will be, I, I think we need to get some more, let's take a look at it, get some feedback. And, and we do have the blessing of having some of it being, have been developed, so we can get that context. And I just, I just think it's worth doing that, now not stopping if we need to do some, some infrastructure work to get the bridge going, not that. But I'm not sure, it wouldn't be a bad idea for the People's Park to have some more people input in, in that at this point, because so much has happened, and I think it's, so much of it is so fantastic. I, I'm talking, I think we're talking about around the edges, I think you hear that from us, that there's, you know... But I just think it can, I think that's an important part, so that's my perspective.
Let me ask a procedural question then, to whoever can answer. So, and, and I don't disagree that public input is important. I feel like there's been a ton of public input on that. I mean, we had a work session, didn't we, where we sat out there and we talked about a lot of this stuff? I, I get it, I understand the idea of feedback, but I guess I'm comfortable with it.
It's the timing thing I'm talking about, Greg, that, that was given a few years ago as in generals. Not that it wasn't there, but do I understand that, that there hasn't been, maybe I'm wrong, has there been recent?
We've used graphics and stuff to depict, but the real deep dive with residents occurred, programming, what do you want to see in it, how you want it laid out, the concept plan, the master plan. We went to every neighborhood group and organization. Donna and I went to the community church and gave big presentations and business associations. But that was more the, the, the basic and the concept plans that were there. I think the, the final development plans that you're seeing today are the most refined versions. And I think the entire design team wants council and the community to be as comfortable with this as they can be, because it's- to be as comfortable with this as they can be, because it's, when you go from forty-five percent to a hundred percent, that's absolute final irreversible kinds of stuff. We don't want to send these guys back to the drawing board at forty-five percent by any stretch of imagination, because that would be most in time and cost probably something you wouldn't want to consider. But I think the notion that we get your comments, bring them back to you in terms of a memo that kind of says, here's what we think we heard, and then secondarily share this more refined versions, the videos, the other stuff we've got, in the same kind of public venues that we had before, seek additional input, share with you the input that was collected before at the previous stages. So you kind of have the benefit of that, I think is worth doing on this plan. I think the design team and the entire, you know, operations and management team would be supportive of that.
Yeah, I want to, I want to add that, you know, no one's shutting off input here. We have to take what we get, and then we, and then, and we bring this forward, and it's an iterative process. We have taken a lot of public input. We have. I want to, we have. Now, we will continue to do that, and we will continue to check in. And it's too easy to take what we have and have a public meeting and check it. And we can do that. And, and the one thing I want to make sure everyone's hearing, at least what I've been hearing all along, is that, you know, the hardscape, first of all, let me start from ground zero. The bridge is dictating a lot. That's just the foundational piece of this. The bridge landings dictate a lot. And then from there, things build off of that, right? And I, I don't mean to be captain obvious about this, but that's, that's kind of what we're really talking about. So those amenities coming off of that can be revisited and discussed. Obviously, this hardscape stuff we've got to get right. And, and the comments about, you know, softening it and the railings and all these kind of things, obviously want to get that right. So to Terry's point, let us retreat from what we're hearing on those matters, and then come back to you. The, the other part about programming and public input, I hope what Matt demonstrated, was that we've gotten all kinds of input. In fact, we've got hundreds of ideas of input, of which I would promise you probably hadn't changed much from a programmatic perspective. And the idea here is to make sure we're building a unique park that gives us maximum flexibility to respond to the trending programming types that are happening. And to me, at least, as a, as a resident and your city manager, that to me is where the opportunity lies, is how do we leverage the, the program, programming opportunity, and not to overbuild this thing to the point that you're cutting yourself out of program opportunities. And, and I think the maximum flexibility is the best when it, when it comes to that. We're learning that, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, when we're, we've been experimenting with exporting programming out of the hard walls of the rec center and out of the hardened spaces. We're taking programmings to parks. And, and that's the kind of thing I think that could be the uniqueness of this park, is that you're making it so flexible that you're going to keep up with the demand and the ideas that are going to be generated all the time, because we're constantly reacting to that aspect. So I don't want anyone to feel like we're, you know, in any way shutting down that, that aspect by building swing sets here and slides there, and it's not that, that kind of a park. So, but we can, we can host a town hall. We can bring people in. We can have them, we can bounce this off. We can, you know, that's too easy.
Well, then maybe I can just cut to the quick here. So we're not going to vote on this?
No, I, it doesn't sound like you had a vote tonight, anyway. So I would say, look, the, the thing that's most critical, and when I was kind of sidebar and running around about, just for sanity check, was the, was the effect of this on the bridge construction. And I think, you know, we've got that answered relative to, to the bridge construction. I want to make sure that thing's staying on target and, and, and what Terry mentioned a minute ago about, about that wall being put in. Structural piece is very critical. Now, we're turning the corner here soon on a CIP process, and, and if nothing else, we hold the dollars constant. And we can always adjust as we go if there's something new and different that, that's changing it. I don't think you necessarily are asking to reinvent a wheel here. You're asking to take what we've taken. We're going to another level of exchange and input. We can, we can do that. And we've got, we've got time that we can do that sort of thing. And no one from the team is throwing anything at me, so I think, I think we're, I'm not lying to you on that.
I think one thing on the time, just to mention, I think that's correct. That's why we need to get it right, is that we've, correct me if I'm wrong, Megan, but the pedestrian bridge is slated to be completed summer of nineteen, so we're talking summer from a year from now. Obviously, folks are going to want to be crossing a completed bridge, we suspect. So we're going to be, one of the challenges that we are looking at is as we build this plaza and these east side improvements, how do you provide for interim walkway that kind of works through those elements there? But the more we understand and can get to completion on construction drawings, what's going to be built, how it's going to be built, the sooner we can begin to think through phasing in a really informed way and interim access measures and all those other kind of things. That's probably the biggest pressure point on us, because we suspect summer of nineteen, lots of folks are going to want to be, experience something here, and we want to be in a position to make sure things can, we can't do too much before then. There's only minor things that could be done before the bridge contractor gets out of the way. So we do have some time to explore these elements. We'd rather get it right, make sure everybody's comfortable with it going forward, but keep those timeframes in mind, if you would.
I think that you can take this as a great opportunity to start to promote this park. I mean, we haven't had a town hall meeting here in a long time. And I think if, we use our social media, we show what we have, we come as council members and leave it open to the public, give them the opportunity to tell us what they think, we sit down and discuss this, I think we're going to be a lot happier if we know that we have great buy-in. I see no reason that we have to slow anything down, but I do think that it's an opportunity to promote it. It's an opportunity to get good feedback. It's an opportunity to be excited about how to go forward.
And I have to say, we have a town hall meeting here every other week. And we also have had work sessions, and we've had P and Z meetings, and we've had ARB meetings, and we've had, I just really don't want our public hearing tonight that we have not had input. And I'm going to speak loudly on that, because we have. And these meetings, we, we are inviting our public to. Now, we need to work harder and harder and harder at that, but I, I don't want anyone to take away that we have not been doing that, because, because we have, we just simply have, so.
You know, I'm, Dana, I'm absolutely sure that you probably have. I'm just saying, a dedicated opportunity to take a look at this. I mean, that's just my opinion, but I feel as if that's, I don't have anything in my history that tells me what the public has said. I just have what P and Z has said in ARB, so therefore, I would like to know what the public says, so.
Let us get to that and the history, because some of you remember, we had a big neighborhood meeting in La Scala. We had one at the rec center. We had one at OCLC. We've had a variety of those focused primarily on this with small discussion groups and input. We've cataloged that. That got all put together in a major report. Let us pull that together, and maybe in the context of that, which informed the master plan, suggest for you maybe some strategies for public input, given the level of design and planning we're at now on there, and come back with a recommended approach for soliciting additional input at this stage.
Chris, go ahead.
I, I would ask that when we, when we talk about this again, if you could tell us ahead of time the decisions that have already been made. I spent four and a half hours poring over these drawings and figuring out how we could do retaining walls that would meet closer to code. And I hear tonight that we, in twenty-one days, we need to start these ten-foot and fourteen-and-a-half-foot retaining walls if we want the bridge to land. Otherwise, we build a bridge to nowhere.
We've said nothing about the wall that requires the variance, which is the fourteen-and-a-half. The ten-foot retaining wall that holds up the western edge, just a structural element that holds up the western edge of pedestrian path, yes, that does need to move forward.
The drawings make it appear as though the, the pedestrian bridge lands on top of the fourteen-and-a-half-foot retaining wall. The ten-foot retaining wall is-
The abutment where it lands is built. It's the retaining wall underneath the structural steel that's got to get built now.
So we already have built the fourteen-and-a-half-foot retaining wall?
No, the, you want to explain the abutment that's been built where the bridge will land in terms of?
Yeah, right now, what's out there is the abutment, which is the end of the bridge. So that's where the western end of the bridge hits. You'll, you'll see a square, large piece of concrete out there right now. That's called the abutment.
Okay.
So that's what we've been referencing as the landing point that's out there, the elevation set. Everything needs to be built around that point.
According to the drawings, and Darren, maybe you can help me understand, the ten-foot retaining wall is the low wall on which the sidewalk is built.
Correct.
And then the fourteen-and-a-half-foot retaining wall is the one on which the bridge actually lands.
Bridge lands on the abutment. The bridge lands on the abutment. And the question with regard to the whole history of this design is whether we want a plaza at bridge grade and street grade that accepts that traffic at that grade, which results in a fourteen-foot-high wall, or whether we want the bridge to land on a fourteen-foot-high abutment and slope down and have a narrow path, or some other design solution that would preclude the need to create a fourteen-foot-high wall. So we could have earth sloped down. We could have gravel. We could have ground cover. We could have a, what, what's the width of the bridge, Megan?
Fourteen feet.
We could have a fourteen-foot-wide path that takes you from where it hits that abutment to Riverside Drive. Our suspicion is, is that we do want a little bit more of that, that plaza gathering area there, and to keep that level and accessible, that's where we end up with the fourteen-foot-high wall there. I mean, that's, that's the thinking that has gone into what we're looking at right now.
Which is dictated by the height of the abutment.
By the landing.
It's dictated by Riverside Drive grade and-
Finished floor elevation of the bridge. Yeah, this thing's been kicked around for years.
The only element that isn't part of the original bridge contract, and it, bridge contract does not include this fourteen-foot wall on the building, is this retaining wall that we're talking about, the ten-foot retaining wall. It's because it goes underneath that bridge there, and it would be very expensive. And there's no, that retaining wall has to be there to accommodate a walkway along river's edge. It would be very expensive and highly undesirable to build that later, once the pedestrian bridge is done.
And that's the wall in between, that would fall in between the abutment that's built, that's out there today, and the river. So it essentially gets built on the-
Riverside of that.
Edge of the cliff.
So the fourteen-and-a-half-foot retaining wall encloses the existing abutment?
In a form, yeah. Yeah, in a way, it does. It, you know, the abutment is only as wide as it needs to be to accept the fourteen-foot-wide bridge, but we've used the wall to expand that space a little bit to create the plaza around the, around the land.
Okay, so let's, again, I'm going to take another run at cutting to the quick here. So we're not going to vote on this. Do we need to vote on the waiver for that retaining wall tonight if we don't-
Because you're not doing the fourteen-and-a-half-foot one as part of this, you don't need to take any action with regard to a waiver. I think if we get kind of acknowledge, I think college, if council acknowledges that we need to move forward with this other retaining wall as part of the bridge piece, and we have a sense of that, I don't know how you want to memorialize that, that's the time-sensitive piece that we need to make sure we can move forward on.
I, I think we have to do that, because we can't get to the final construction date. And it's not like, you know, so in your interest, Chris, that the final finished materials on that retaining thing has not been decided, so.
So Jen, do we need to do something tonight on that issue?
So I'm trying to-
Yes.
Let's just do a motion to authorize the pursuit of the retaining wall at the, I don't know exactly how you want to articulate that, to make sure we get-
Avoid the conflict of future bridge construction?
Yeah. So we'll make a motion to authorize, you know, construction of that, and then we'll table the rest of it.
Okay, then let's, let's just do this one at a time. I will make a motion that we do what you just said, authorize the, whatever we need to authorize to relieve the conflict that you're talking about.
Yeah, the base construction.
The base construction. Okay. I make a motion that we allow that to proceed, that construction to proceed.
I'll second it.
And?
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amaro's groomsmen?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Petersen?
Yes. Okay. Now, when it comes to the rest of this stuff, Dana, if I could list, I think this would be helpful. I'm going to try to list the issues that have been raised that, from someone up here to get a little more feedback before we come back. The retaining wall and the railing that Chris brought up, the diagrams that show the grading percentages, and I, I think you said, Darren, that you guys already have those, if you can get that to us. The issues with respect to the design of the fountain, primarily the bottom part, I guess, to where the water goes. The issues that Chris and Kathy both brought up about the lighting. Can we just get more of an explanation as to what those light bars are, and whether it is that sort of that glowy kind of thing, or whether it's, you know, direct lighting? If we could just get more feedback on that. Maybe some, is it, or do you have one of the Looking North drawings that won, I think maybe Kathy, or maybe Jane had asked that?
Say again, please, one of-
From standing at the south end, looking north, do you have a drawing of that Kathy was asking about?
Yeah, we can work on creating that view.
Thank you.
Okay. If we could get that view, I think we all had questions about river access, but they've been answered. I mean, it is what it is, right? You can't get any more access on that side of the river, other than what Dana described, and the one piece that is there, and then the other side, you have, certainly have quite a bit more access. Did you have any other questions about the trees?
I think of, I think the color coded were confusing, because I'd like to see more of that drawing of what's going to get removed. The, the two lists that go one through, was one hundred eighty-seven, and then there was one through, one through seventy-five A, and those numbers don't connect. If we could just clean up that, so that if you came with a red, yellow, orange, and green drawing, that red might be stuff that's removed, or it's dead, you know, something along those lines would be really helpful.
Right.
Plus, in the statement that Matt made, that if it's construction, it's got to go, and if it's not, it's dead, then it's got to go. And other than that, it's not going to be disturbed. So, okay. Christine, did you have issues that you want to add to that list?
No, the questions that I had were either addressed or already brought up by each of you. And then I think staff's follow-up is to provide to all of us a refresher on all of the public feedback that's occurred.
Historical.
Yeah, that's our-
Dana?
Yes, you mentioned railing, correct?
The railing and the retaining wall railing that Chris talked about.
Yep.
So I have the retaining wall and the railing, the grading, the fountain-
Right.
Lighting.
Yep.
Possibly plantings. I don't, you know, more, more information on what plantings may be available. And I think it's maybe more just clarification of the tree issue and an understanding about that.
I think too, was it the, was it the edging or hardness of the seating wall?
Yeah, the, the softening of that, and what that's going to feel like, so that it doesn't feel too, too strong.
Okay.
And then, if I may, I'm sorry.
Yes, or no?
One, one more. Was the stone versus the wood on the building? Did that get, on the pavilion? I'm assuming we're moving forward with that for now.
Were you okay with stone on one side and wood on three sides?
Yeah, I think so.
That solves that, the weathering problem.
Yeah, we just don't want the maintenance. And then on Jane's comment, which was interesting about nodes, you know, giant open space, and then wouldn't it be nice to have a node that's quiet that you could go into? I don't think you're ready to create that yet, are you? Or even if, maybe we're supposed to create that later on in the, in the, in the plan. So she's saying, you know, it'd be nice to have a spot where it's wrapping around you and you're-
Yeah. I think we do. I think we do want to create that, and I think it's a great comment.
So it can either go, you know, as it narrows one area or the other, and, and you could work that space in there. It would be great, if, you know, quiet space for somebody to sit down.
Okay, so then I'm going to make a motion that we, go ahead.
Still got a couple more.
Yep, go ahead.
Green roof.
I thought that was a pretty cool idea.
That's a good idea. Yeah, that's, that's a zoning requirement in Principality in Monaco.
Just going to cut that.
Great idea. Hard to mow, but they're-
Everybody's got to have a green roof.
Got it.
Does that make you a maintenance nightmare?
I'm joking about the green roof. I'm joking. And then-
Just comment, I, I know when Bridge Park was, we had a few iterations about green walls and a variety of things, and they came back a few times saying, this is way more challenging than, and expensive than we want to bite off. So we're feeling good about this?
The green roof?
Yeah.
Yeah, green, green walls are tough, because water doesn't want to hang out in them very long. Green roofs are much easier. There's a better track record of, of the durability of those.
Great idea.
This is a cedum one, is that what you said in the note?
That's what we're looking at now.
It's just going to be cedum, okay. And that's the safest.
We have experience with one green roof at the rec center.
That's right, yeah.
Lessons learned, but, but we, we have one.
The delta we heard in cost on that, just as we vetted that, so we've got some ranges. I think the estimate was in the one-hundred-and-twenty, one-thirty. I think MKSC said, based on experience, go one-fifty to two-hundred thousand is kind of a delta cost to build that. And then the, for this kind of plant material, the frequency of the kind of treatment per year, I think Matt's crew felt that that was a pretty modest impact. It wasn't going to be a stretch, given the other park maintenance responsibilities he was going to have in that area.
And that cost delta's not just the plant material, it's the structural capacity to support the additional weight that's on there.
I have one other comment about, just quickly, on the, on the north end, no, on the south end of, of the park, as you're going towards the Bridge Street Bridge, I noticed that it's mainly just planted in trees. Is that an opportunity to do something that has a little bit more intimacy, because it kind of all comes together there? It's a little smaller area.
Yeah.
I, I wanted even a, a walking path with some, you know, flowering things.
And I think to the north, too, you know, so the lawn is probably the most open and active area, and then as you move to the north and south.
You get these little intimate spaces that are kind of, and then one other thing, was I was walking it today. I parked my car in front of Cap City Diner, and it was a very long walk. I parked my car in front of Cap City Diner, and it was a very long walk to the intersection, and it was a very long walk to the other intersection. And so, I hope the police aren't here, but I crossed over. Now, here's the thing. So will a lot of other people. Oh, I'm sorry, chief. But anyway, because I wanted to see what it... You know, exactly what people's behavior would do. By the way, Officer Evans went there, and he didn't give me a ticket. No, he wasn't there when I did it. But no, is there any plan for a pedestrian crossing there? Because I think people are not gonna walk to the intersections to cross over.
A very brief history on that. I think for folks who park on the east side of Riverside Drive, that's probably correct. For folks from the parking structures, I think they will gravitate to the streets where the signalized crossings are provided. One reason council added the underpass at John Schultz Parkway was to also try to make that a bit more appealing. That's gonna be training enforcement signage. We're concerned about that as well. Residents who live there are taking their dogs to the park and walking in that fashion. So, that's gonna have to be dealt with. But I think for most of the folks who park in structures, they'll tend to gravitate where they can get the signalized crossing. And there's very good pedestrian-activated crossing at those two intersections. They're just a pretty good distance from the on-street parking if you're mid-block.
Right. No crosswalk is planned?
No, I don't think engineers would ever... I mean, we've designed in all the pedestrian crossing ability there. I think it's gonna be possible.
Yeah, okay. I'm just warning you. Don't look good.
Okay, so, I'm gonna make a motion in a minute here that we're gonna table this for you to address those issues. What I suggest, and just to... We gotta start somewhere, is if we get that back from you, and we see that, and before we vote on it, just have one night, maybe at the rec center or somewhere where there's sort of the public unveiling. You have these guys put it up on the thing, go through it. It's about as polished as we're gonna be able to get it. Maybe we can provide people online. You can make comments, leave comments there, whatever, and then set it for a council meeting right after that where we can think about their comments and then hopefully pass it as close to as we have polished it up as we can.
Happy to do that.
Does that accommodate everybody's concerns? Okay, then, I make a motion that we table this development plan review, site plan, whatever we're calling this thing. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Ann.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amaro's Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes. Okay. Thanks, fellas.
Thank you.
Staff comments, Dana.
I have several items this evening. Under your informational reports, I just want to call out a few items. First of all, there's a memo that Director Mumal provided in response to the debt presentation that's in your packet. Another item is I asked... Have been working with staff and asked staff to be working on the Highland-Croye Road situation. So, we provided a memo in your packet that gives you a status of Jockman Farms and the Jerome Grand Development, and also the terms of the infrastructure agreement between Schottenstein Real Estate Group and Union County. Also, wanted to make you aware of various widening options and phases that I've asked staff to take a look at, and sort of the rough orders of magnitude are in here, and I would emphasize rough, but rough orders of magnitude of those costs. I want to assure council that staff is engaged with Union County on discussions about this and what might could happen in the future, and we will keep you up to date and report back to you on how those conversations go and what those possibilities may be. And we will also... I don't know how quickly we will come to resolution on things or how we might tie that into the five-year CIP. My goal would be to have a pretty good idea approaching the capital improvement program budgeting so you can set your priorities accordingly and have that discussion. So, we will try to advance that for you. The other item is I want to make sure you're aware of the signs of Muirfield Village, street signs. They have agreed, the association, to convert those signs to street signs, or let me put it this way. They made a decision to convert those signs to street signs. The city will be responsible to make the conversion, which is a great thing. We've asked Muirfield Village to consider that for a lot of years. I'm glad that they're doing it. Meets a higher standard of safety. And... But the point here is this gives you sort of the costs associated with that and an idea of our plan for rollout. It's not something that we can implement overnight. We will do this in phases over the course of a couple of years. We will put it into our operating budgets accordingly. We might be able to get started on some of that this year, but we will not be able to do a wholesale replacement of Muirfield Village, you know, in one year. The France Road, Rings Road, Neighborhood Commercial Development RFQ process was direction from the previous council that the residual property at the corner of Rings Road and France Road that the city owns, that we would not just hold that land idle, that we would consider something that could work there. We feel we've been significantly informed through the de-cap process, although that process is not completely finalized, but want to start working down the road of talking to potential developers through an RFQ process and in bringing in the residents to be involved with that. You saw a proposed schedule to talk about how and what might could happen there in terms of dialogue and in keep trying to etch down the road as that plan is reviewed and approved, that plan being the de-cap plan, and make sure that this fits in with that. Follow-up memo on the Colden Place Recycling Pilot Project. Ninety-nine percent of that stuff is recycled, which I think is very cool. The stuff that's not, although we try to hold this down, is the dust, but we try to not have too much dust with that either. But that's about the only stuff that's escaping from this recycling, which is a great program.
Thank you for supplying that update.
Sure.
This is really very cool. How many other places are doing this?
It's...
There are some out west.
So, the answer was there are some out west, but we're not aware of very many in the region, so...
And we'll get an update once you've... Okay, great, thanks. That's really cool.
Another follow-up, I believe this was Mr. Reiner's question about the speed limits on Muirfield Drive during the tournament. It's not that we're changing the speed limit. Can't really do that, even on a temporary basis, but what we can do is certainly bring more awareness to it, so we are... We will be putting up appropriate signage for that. A new memo, and I appreciate Planning putting this together, is an update on the developments that they see in adjacent communities. They do attend and monitor what's going on in other planning commissions and the like in surrounding communities, so we'll try to keep that out in front of you. And I also want to thank Planning Division for putting their planning report back in. We were doing this the last year or so, and I think this is the first one that we put in for this year. They've reformatted that, and you'll probably see that. I think it's intended to be on a monthly basis. That'll keep you up to date on what's formally in the pipeline and coming down the pipeline on a formal basis. So, I hope that's helpful information to you. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Dana, is on the signs, is that something you and Walter Zaire agreed with? Is that the sign that we ended up with for the Muirfield signage?
You mean the deployment plan?
No, no, the physical signs, yeah.
Well, the physical sign will be our standard sign in Stein Post. It's gonna be our standard sign, which is brown with the brown and with the white lettering. Is that correct, Megan?
Yes, one of the street name signs.
For the street name signs. Oh, she did. She didn't bring a picture.
Oh, good, thank you. And then, back to the Highland-Croye thing, since we were sort of frozen out of that, I'd really like to see they accept the majority of all this without us. You know, I know it might not be perfect, and we might have to get involved at a certain level, but I'd like to see them sort of take on that burden.
Right.
And making that road the best road they can make it without our taxpayers paying for it.
There has been a contribution by... And I guess it's, you know, appropriate, I kind of give you my attitude in the process here, so I'm checking in with you for policy direction. So, you know, when it comes to Highland-Croye Road, there will be improvements made as a result of the developments that Jerome Township has improved on the west side of Highland-Croye. They being not the township, but the county, has gotten the developer to contribute more funding. So, I think what you'll see early on is you'll see the improvements that are already gonna be underway or are underway at Post Road in Highland-Croye, the turn lane, the traffic signal. There are other turn lanes and traffic signals up at Park Mill. My feeling is that, and what I believe, is that they'll, at least at a minimum design standard right now, is that there'll be a three-lane road put between Post Road and Park Mill, which is kind of halfway between Post Road and Brand Road, maybe not quite halfway. And I think that will be the intent. The timing in which that gets installed is something we're still trying to understand. Will it happen by the time the development opens or what have you? And that's what we're talking to the Union County Administration about. From that platform, then, comes other options, like, do you do three lanes all the way to Brand Road? Do you go ahead and do a boulevard halfway and then do a boulevard all the way to Brand Road? So, that's the order of magnitude stuff I'm talking about. I believe that certainly the city of Dublin would, or should, or does, have some level of contribution. We have garnered contributions towards that from the developments on the east side of Highland-Croye, the new ones that are being proposed and others in the past. Certainly, our residents use that road, and we would have some level of responsibility in funding that road. So, the discussion that we're having now is what we don't want to do is do an improvement that we're gonna bulldoze that improvement away too soon. And is there an opportunity to leverage other sources of funding, other partnership opportunities, you know, with the other jurisdictions? And of course, what might we be willing, or could we consider contributing? And that's the kind of information that, as we go through this discussion, I will bring back to council for you all to be aware of and to consider. So, again, we're trying to preempt, you know, a minimal investment or an investment that's gonna get thrown away too soon, and can we do something that should or could be better on an interim? If it's interim, how long? Or do you leap ahead and do a bigger investment? So, that's... Therein lies the challenge.
No, I get it. I just wanna... I'm just hoping that they pick up, since we weren't able to participate to the level we really wanted to participate in the actual zonings of those areas.
Right.
Which controlled the density of the housing, the cars, and every other aspect of a zoning going awry. I'd like to see them pick up the majority of the tab and not our taxpayers. But as you said, it's our road, part of it's our road. We're gonna have to probably jump in and upgrade it. But these people who decided that our zoning, our input, when it's valuable as theirs might have been, now should bear the consequences of their decision-making and not our taxpayers. But I also get the other part where, hey, in the bitter end, we're gonna have to do the right thing for the community and...
Right, understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's your signs.
There's your signs, John.
Yeah, so, up on the screen, we do have pictures of a citywide standard sign on the left. On the left is the street name sign. That's the brown powder-coated post with the rain cap on top, as well as the sign face that's brown and white. And then, on the right is our standard regulatory sign with a galvanized post and rain cap. And I've had this discussion with Walter on numerous occasions about utilizing the standard citywide signage, and Bob Bateman was involved in one of the meetings, and he was okay with it as well.
Thank you.
Thanks, Megan. Okay, council committee reports, P and Z. Jane?
We met, and there isn't a whole lot to say. You can see the minutes on the planning and zoning, although I will say that, once again, the minutes for planning and zoning aren't updated on the website, so we need to get those minutes back on. And I would just encourage planning, hopefully, that when P and Z looks at some of these preliminary things, these concept plans, that we actually get some concepts and not fully baked plans. It's really difficult, I think, for planning and zoning sometimes to deal with that, but otherwise, it was a very good meeting.
Thank you. Jane? Admin, Chris?
You have all committed to our review times and our additional work sessions, so those are on the calendar, and we will execute... We're gonna be really busy until our July break.
If I may, we intend to have a read-ahead packet for your work session next Monday out by midweek is the goal.
Finance, Mike is not here, but do either Kathy or Christine have anything to add for the finance committee report?
Well, we may have a July break, but then, August gets downright busy. I think we have three CIP workshops scheduled for August.
And I think Angel's follow-up on the budget, I mean, the financing discussion. I did have a couple questions and follow-up for that, but I know she's not here, so we'll follow back around, but I appreciate that. So, we may have maybe one more iteration on a few of those points, but I think that was very helpful.
Okay, thank you.
Public Service Committee, Christina?
So, we met. It was a great meeting, I thought. We talked about aging in place, Michelle and Christine and company will be getting back together with us specifically in September. I think it's September 5th to give us an update on some of the initiatives that they have moving forward in terms of talking with caregivers and some other things. So, I'm really looking forward to that update. We also had a really good discussion about panhandling and what are some different ways that we can think outside the box a little bit in terms of dealing with a challenging situation that is challenging because we're dealing with free speech and people's relative discomfort, and yet, we have a really kind community who wants to give to folks. So, they'll be putting together an update on some of that brainstorming and bringing that back, either for council or for that committee. And then, in our mailboxes today, we had these Beyond Cash cards, and so, this was some of the feedback that we've gotten from our community about are there ways that we can help these folks and let them know that there are resources for them out there. These are really designed for police and our community service officers to give out, but they are available to the public. You can get them at the rec center and at the library. And it just says, "Our community cares about you. Instead of cash, please accept this list of resources. You do not need to go hungry or homeless in Dublin or in central Ohio." And then, on the back is a list of some resources. And I want to reiterate the strong desire for our residents to not give cash or food to the panhandlers. That only encourages them to continue panhandling and to stay where they are. We do have lots of resources for these folks. We care very much about them. I want to make sure that they have the resources that they need to be the healthiest that they can be. And Jane and I... I owe you, Jane, an email specifically to set up a conversation for some more information some more information and some other things that we can talk about with that committee, but it was great to get the committee kicked back off again, so thank you.
Hey, Christine, can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
We've received some, I think, really interesting ideas from residents on panhandling, ideas that they've seen in other places, et cetera, so forth. So I know you, that was part of the discussion. So what's the timing on following back up on this and, you know, putting some of these ideas to trying them, testing them?
That's a great question, and that's the cue for Michelle.
So, real quick, while she's making her way, a couple of the residents that had emailed, I exchanged emails with them today, and they sent a couple pictures of things that they had seen to me this afternoon. So I asked Jenny to put them up, and they're kind of, I don't know that we would do it exactly like this, but the, so what the opportunity is, is for drop any coins that you'd like to donate to a shelter or food pantry or whatever, you would drop that money into this rather than hand it to a panhandler, and then it would give some information on how it can be helpful. And I'd really like to see us pursue, not this exactly, but something that would be more representative of us that would communicate this same thing.
And I think that sort of installation is good where you have pedestrians, and we've seen some other ideas from some other communities and areas where it's vehicular, where they're passing by, and some street signs with a similar message.
This would be great, bridge and high.
Exactly. Yeah, we saw a similar example out of Dayton that we really liked today that we were looking at, so we'll come back to council before the end of the month with some ideas. We might even start implementing some of these, like the street signs, if we can get them up and going ahead of time, so, but we'll definitely keep council updated.
We've heard a lot from residents, I've read about signs, signs next to the signs, and the city of Dayton, it was Dayton, right, had a really great example of a, really a street sign that you just put there. And of course, you want to be careful about the words, but it was really a great way to get this message across using a static street sign, so anyway, yeah, it was pretty cool.
That came up at the meeting, too, about a folding sign that sits out on the intersection next to the panhandler. It basically says, you know, "This isn't a great idea," or "I like this sign." That came up at our meeting, same thing. I guess, I guess part of the things I got from that meeting, and I'm curious about, is to what level do we go to in this aging-in-place thing? I mean, to what level does a city really do this? I mean, and what's our responsibility? I mean, and if you're going to have a really well-done aging-in-place thing and you sort of move into the blue zone thing, you know, to what level do we provide the exercise, the diet, nutrition information that keeps you healthy and young, and a structural place to hang out where they've always proven that those three things, a social interaction keeps you healthy, you're meeting other people, you're active, you have a place to go, and so it's the three things, exercise, diet, nutrition, and that sense of community if you don't have a family or you're, you know, or a large community. So I always wondered what the parameters of our city's responsibility is that? I mean, do we want the moniker that if you move to Dublin, you'll live one to five years longer than anywhere else in this part of the country because we care so much and we develop such an intense and creative program like other places have around the world? I mean, I really don't know. I guess, I guess that's up for grabs, so just a thought.
And I think that, John, that's one of the things that we talked about in terms of figuring out what our goals are and what our responsibilities are. And I really, really love the thought that you have about understanding what the metrics are behind, have we been successful in whatever it is that we choose to implement? And I think that's a key piece that we need to make sure that we keep an eye on. It was a great conversation.
Okay, Coda, Kathy?
Yes, thank you. So I attended my first board meeting on the 25th of April. It was a learning experience, so here we go. I didn't feel too bad because their new president and CEO, Joanna Pinkerton, started three days before I did, so that was good. She's going to be terrific. I will pass along one thing that was discussed at the board meeting with, I think is a great program when we talk about mobility and transportation changing and options, is that beginning the 1st of June, they're kicking off something called the Downtown Seapass Program, where employers downtown are providing free unlimited Coda rides to their employees to reduce the amount of traffic flow, you know, on the freeways, but also the, you know, reduce the parking problem in downtown. And so I guess starting May 1st, companies are registering, you can go out and look and see if your employer is on one of those, but they hope, of course, it'd increase ridership, but also, you know, helps with parking, et cetera, so forth. So they're doing some amazing things, so I'm very, very much looking forward to my opportunity to work with that group. And as we think about mobility and all of the things that are happening in our court and our city, I think it's just a wonderful opportunity for us to do some of that work then, so I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Dublin Friendship Association, oh, no, Dublin Community Foundation, Chris?
We met last week. You know, they're trying to figure out how to raise money within the community and coordinate services. So there's a tremendous amount of challenges, they're working really hard on some solutions, and we'll hope for good things.
Friendship Association, Christina?
Thanks. Nancy and I met with Tim and Sabine from the Columbus Sister Cities regarding potential joint events, and so we're continuing to kind of dialogue back and forth with them. They would really like one of our focus areas to be India, and so we'll be working with them on that. And Todd Hoadley and I actually met with the libraries to talk about the potential of celebrating the 100th anniversary of the 1919 building, kind of alongside, or maybe folded into is a better way to say it, with the library opening because they happen to fall in the same year. So the library is going to get back to us with some thoughts about that. They have a very sort of structured program that they do for their library openings, and we don't want to interfere with that, but we think that there's a way that we could, you know, bring in some, you know, key folks from the community in some way with the library to celebrate that 100th anniversary of the 1919.
The 1919 building will be 100 years old in 2019?
Imagine that.
How about that?
I know, right?
There's some logic in this.
Who would have thought it was built in 1919?
Okay, you just took my really cool idea and made it sound really dumb.
No.
Adding humor.
Morphie, Chris?
I had our first executive committee meeting this week, it was very good. We, too, talked about the Bus Pass program because they're working on that as well, and then they spent quite a bit of time talking about they're going back to Nevada for the Hyperloop, and I guess they have some more construction complete, and, you know, I'm thinking that this Hyperloop thing is going to be real, and it could be real soon, in terms of major steps and changes, deviations in transportation, and...
Vice Mayor Amos Grooms agreed to be one of the first to try it.
Dana was going to put me on the front seat of the front car, and he was going to hope for good things, so...
I'm not putting you on.
No, yes, sign me up, I'll do that. And then the second half of our time was there, we talked about the expansion of the 33 corridor is now going to go all the way to I-75 and points beyond, and so it's really going to be a much more robust area for study, is even more so. So we'll have more information about that forthcoming as well.
Logan Union, Champagne County Regional Planning Commission, Kathy?
Nothing to report.
About the U.S. 33 Innovation Corridor Group?
Nope. Haven't met again.
Yep, not until June 15th.
June 15th, put it down. Dublin Arts Council, John?
Just want to thank everybody for their support for the Dublin Arts Council Garden Party, Chris and Christina, First Class, unlimited food, just really a nice evening, so they did a great job.
Beautiful art objects as well.
Oh, gosh, yeah. Unlimited, yeah, I think it was over 200 and some objects for silent auction, and they were really, really nice, so just thanks for coming.
Thanks, John. Washington Township, Eric, chief, you got anything to report?
I'd like to.
Okay, council roundtable. Jane?
Let's see, we had a request, we had an email from one of our residents requesting us to consider cemetery space.
I saw that.
We are out of it. So I know that that's been a discussion in the past, but I did talk to that person and did say that we would bring that up and discuss it and see if we can't come up with some ideas, because she was very adamant, and I can see where our loyal citizens would like to be buried here in our city, so we are out of cemetery space. Just would like a little follow-up on, I know we've been working on the maintenance code, but we continue to get concerns about the Monterey, Monterey Drive items, and I just want to keep our residents up on that. And I want to thank the city manager and our Department of Streets and Utilities for the help they gave our folks when the biofilter was down. I can't tell you how appreciative they are of that, they really do appreciate that. And then I have, I will be speaking at the Llewellyn Farms HOA meeting at council chambers this Thursday, so if there's anything that you want me to ask anybody at Llewellyn Farms about their opinions or anything, or anything to bring forward, I'll be spending some time with those folks. Thanks.
Thank you, Jane. Kathy?
Just one thing, I wanted to congratulate the chamber and thank the residents on a great community service day on Saturday. That was fantastic and another example of neighbors helping neighbors, and it was, it was great fun, so I enjoyed that. And at the end, I got to ride on the new Lime bike, so that was really cool. Yeah, they're fun. If you haven't, if you haven't yet tried it, give it a whirl, literally, it's great, so thanks.
John?
Yeah, it's a late hour, and I'm going to let you guys go.
Christina?
You're not so lucky. Yes, community service day was great. Lime bikes are cool. One thing that you need to know about the Lime bikes is they don't actually have air in the tires, it's like a hard foam, which I didn't know until I rode it, it was cool. And then when I was at the Citizen U group last Thursday, we talked about being a tree city. We're a tree city now for 30 years, and I was very saddened to know that we don't have our Tree City for 30 Years sign posted anywhere in the city. And that makes me really sad, because when I drove through Powell the other day, they have their Tree City for 20 Years sign like right there. I was like...
So are you suggesting you don't want to be sad anymore and you want us to put up a 30 Years?
Yeah, you're really good at reading my mood. Thank you, Dana.
She's easy, please, isn't she?
Yes, yes, I would love to see that thing put up.
All right.
Thank you. That's it.
Chris?
A couple things. Thank you, Dana, and folks for responding to the Historic Dublin Noise Solutions. We'll be looking at trying to solve those problems. I have a couple fiscal memo things for Angel, I'll follow up with her separately. I have a question about our directional signs, our wayfinding signs throughout the city. When we approved those, there was a finial on top of them that was a shape of a shamrock sort of thing, and I'm wondering, are we still expecting a finial for the top of our wayfinding signs?
Is a room full of blanks?
Yeah, sorry, Megan, I'm putting you on the spot. Check and advise, I guess.
I'm going to have to go back and check, but I believe that that finial was specific to the wayfinding signs in the historic district?
Have they been installed?
I thought so, but I will need to verify that.
I haven't seen, okay.
They should be.
So I will look harder.
But now you're making me wonder, so I will go check.
I didn't, I guess I didn't realize it was just historic district, so...
Yeah.
I think I recall that, too.
Okay.
That's right.
I wanted to thank the Wendy's Corporation. On the 25th, I had the opportunity to go and address their top 200 GMs from around the world, and there were folks from many foreign nations that came to Dublin, and they stayed, all stayed in the embassy suites there, and what an impressive group. It's kind of like watching a really fine-oiled machine, the way that they run over there, so thank them for that. Did have the opportunity to swear in our new ARB members on the 25th, and they were excited and eager to get started with that. And also, thank you to staff for putting together such a nice reception for Dr. Nellis, the new president of Ohio University. It was certainly a joy to meet him and welcome him to our community. And I, too, enjoyed, the community service day is one of my favorite days of the year because you see so many families walk in the door and all they want to do is help somebody else, and that is a great defining characteristic of our community, and it was fun. That's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, it was really nice to meet Dr. Nellis, he's going to be a great partner, he's very excited about the Dublin development that they're going to be expanding, so really it was a pleasure to meet him and spend some time with him, and you guys put together a great event, so that was, that was great. So with that, we are adjourned.